Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session Agenda. Item number one is Call to Order. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per city of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. I’m going to begin the work-study session actually by taking item 7A under Mayor’s Announcements out of order to present and read a proclamation in honor of Chase-Lucas Day. Okay. Oh, go on, wait. Okay. All right. I’ll do that later. Thank you, Councilor McKee. All right. With that then said, I will move forward to item number two, which is Call to the Audience. The City Council welcomes public comment at this time for the Issue-Review Session and Committee of the Whole Items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Madam Clerk, I believe you have one card to read into the record.
Mayor, I do have a letter from Ron Tapscott, and due to a schedule conflict on presenting the information he’s compiled, Mayor and Council regarding Issue-Review Session Item 3C, communications regarding the city’s outreach and support for our city’s unsheltered residents have been aspirational and hopeful, but they are not factually accurate. Neighbors and small businesses have legitimate concerns regarding the use of our parks, alleys, and sidewalks for urban camping. It is imperative they are provided correct information. We need an accurate understanding of where efforts are successful and where they need improvement. The examples listed below are not to call into question staff’s intentions and hard work. Also recognized, our political institutions’ desire to market the image of “no problems here, we got it, all is good.” Reports from case managers and service providers on the ground and street follow. Number one, city-operated shelters. There is no formal process for admission. Time, homeless, and current place in line appear to have little consideration. There is limited to no case management for a housing plan. Most appear to be discharged back onto the street. The length of stay seems arbitrary and changes from initial intake to gaining occupancy and remaining in the shelter. Number two, outreach. The Hope Team advises unsheltered residents that they should seek a clinical evaluation to receive an SMI diagnosis to expedite the housing process. Many are understandably declining this false diagnosis. It is not clear if further funding has been requested from HUD to open the now-closed Section 8 waiting list. Reports indicate the priority for the Hope Team is to service 311 line used to report encampments. This prioritization has interrupted team members’ real-time case management. They discontinue those engagements with the unsheltered in order to respond. There is no grievance procedure for those who question the functionality and fairness of the system. Tempe Works, the city’s program to employ the unhoused, has been a meager enterprise from its inception. Other cities of equal size have employed hundreds of residents with services attached. We have employed a significantly lesser number. One story may reveal a flawed approach. One shelter resident was enrolled in Tempe Works. On their start day, their alarm didn’t work. They showed up late and were immediately fired. Number three, victim blaming. It is time to retire the term “service-resistant.” Yes, some may choose this lifestyle, but many who are trying to better their lot in life encounter systemically challenged delivery mechanism. The term “service-resistant” disrespectfully blames the victim. It impedes efforts to improve the delivery system and provide Tempe residents with a comprehensive appreciation of the challenges and difficulties city staff and unsheltered Tempe residents are facing. And that closes out, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other comment cards that you have to read?
Nope, that’s it.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. All right. Next thing I should ask too is, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council on any of the listed agenda items? If so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Okay, seeing none, I’ll go ahead and close item number two. I’m going to move to item number three, which is the Issue-Review Session portion of the agenda, but I’m going to take things a little out of order this evening. I’m going to first start with item 3C, Public Health and Safety, Homeless Outreach, Community Support, and Business Initiatives. And with that, I’m going to call up Rosa Anchowsky, our Chief Deputy City Manager, and Greg Reese, our Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Chief.
Let me leave the seat here for her. Why don’t you take them in? Do I have to do this? Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. As the Mayor introduced, Chief Deputy City Manager Rosa Anchowsky, and with us...
...Fire Medical Rescue Chief Greg Reese.
We have a few slides, 37 to be exact, and we will try to make it as brief as possible, but it gives you an understanding of the tremendous work that the Chief and I are honored to present on behalf of this organization and this community that has been working very, very hard in the last three months. So with that, we’ll start the slides. Thank you. So as we always start, we... The objective of today is to share with you updates on public health in our community with regards to homeless solutions. Our presentation shares a lot of data, but please know that it all is a companion piece to the compassion and how we feel about this city. We know that our city is an extremely compassionate city that cares about everyone, and we are trying to figure out what is really a national issue at a local level. The objectives of today is to share public health and safety, homeless strategy plan, as you all are aware, for the 30, 60, 90-day, what we call 30, 60, 90-days, which is really a triage looking at what we need to do quickly in our organization, in our city. Progress indicators, homeless solutions hub and dashboards, the Tempe River Bottom update, protecting public health and safety, our business partners that have been a tremendous asset to us, and our nonprofit partners, we’ll talk about that, our update on community parks, which we know are very dear as far as our community and what we’ve heard recently, future actions that we will be taking, it’s just the beginning of our work, and Bloomberg-Harvard So with this, I’m going to turn it over to the Chief to start with the River Bottom Calls for Service.
Okay. Can you hear me well? I’ve never been accused of being quiet, but I can’t get up close to the mic. So, a brief history as it relates to the station concerns...
Chief, give me one second. Thanks, Mayor Adams.
I’m seeing some audience members having trouble hearing. Am I correct? Okay, so if we could just maybe turn up their mics a little bit, that’d be great. Thank you.
Let me get it down here. Can you hear me now?
Pretty good, or...
Okay. Okay, brief history as it relates to our safety concerns within the River Bottom and what caused us to establish an incident management team. We were hearing concerns from our first responders over the past several years and concerns about for safety of the responders as well as the people living in the River Bottom. The concerns caused us to take a historical look at the calls for service. As you can see on the slide in front of you, which depicts the call volume, the call volume has increased significantly over an extremely short period of time. We have seen an increase in both EMS or emergency medical calls and fire calls to the River Bottoms, to the River Bottom, which poses a number of challenges that we were not prepared for. On emergency medical services calls, there’s not a pinpointed address, one that you would call from a residence, a business. We get dispatched to the River Bottom, and that delay in time in trying to find a patient, as you know, as I’ve come before you, that time means everything to us. We also have access problems. The River Bottom was not created for us to make access into it, to gain access to patients or to gain access to fight fires down in the River Bottom. Really, to give you an idea of what it’s like going to the River Bottom, it’s like responding to the mountain preserves within the Phoenix metropolitan area. It requires more units to get into that area, and at times, it’s almost like a technical rescue to get people back out of the River Bottom if we don’t have easy access. To add to the situation over the last few years, what we found is we had to have a police department escort into the River Bottom. Our crews were being threatened at times, and it became extremely unsafe, so we had to call upon our partners in PD to escort us into the River Bottom to provide aid. The fires are even more difficult. We once again are delayed in our ability to access not only the fire, but we’re limited on our hydrants. The River Bottom was not built like you have in a residential or commercial area with the same requirements for hydrants. So we often find ourselves having to shuttle water in to fight the fires, and it does result in a significant number of assets. And there are assets that we do have access to through the automatic aid system, but they are not assets that we own. So we have to take other units out of service in the system, brush trucks, tankers, et cetera, to fight these fires. As you can see up there, what is depicted are both our fire and our medical calls as well as our rescue calls, and what is not depicted is the number of hours and what the commitment has been in resources. I would like to share with you that those numbers in 2017 were 20 hours dedicated to both medical, fire, and rescue responses into the River Bottom. In 2021, it was 116, and in 2022, 275 hours. The vast majority of those hours are dedicated to fighting the fires with the growth and all the growth that has occurred in there. But the thing that concerns me and as well as the deputy city manager, city manager, as well as our care providers, are the fires. It’s people. There are people down in there, and we do not have fire codes in place, we do not have fire sprinklers. We don’t do the type of public education we do with people living in our community. As of October 2nd, not depicted, or a number I did not give to you, we had another fire. The fire was at midnight on October 2nd. It took two and a half hours and 14 units to fight that fire. So there have been some questions about the parks and our response to the parks. We recently evaluated data taken from our electronic patient care reporting systems, that is, the system our crews use to document patient encounters. We looked at the calls into all of our parks in the city of Tempe. What I want to, and the one that stands out is the orange box over here. Of the 1,308 calls, 88% of those calls were in the parks that are presented in the orange box. That is 1,115 patient encounters within those parks, of which 42% were documented by our crews as having drugs or alcohol involved. You can go on to the next one, which is you.
So with the Chief’s updates, we wanted to share with you what our police department has helped work with our security, unarmed security contracts. And we are looking in conversations about what the future may hold with these security contracts, whether it’s bringing back park rangers. What you see before you is a response to what we’re hearing from our community, is recognizing that quality of life in our parks is needed. We’ve heard that also from our employees, who take great pride in the maintenance of their parks, and they’re saying, “We need some help.” So we have, what you have before you is a schedule, and we know that based on resources for the three contracts that we have employed with, that it’s unarmed, but sometimes there’s change of resources, as you know. Things have changed after the pandemic, trying to get folks on board with some jobs. So the Allied Company and Wyndham and Teams have been working with us, trying to figure out how to best make sure that we are filling the gaps in our parks. I wanted to make sure also to share with you an update on the 30, 60, 90-day plan. This plan is the work of not only one department, but multiple departments. I would say, the Chief and I, through either the incident management team that he’ll explain in just a minute, and the 30, 60, 90-day plan, it’s about 80 employees working on this. Just 30 days initially in August, when we first started to do this, working together, we realized that citywide, we needed 24/7 coverage for homeless-related issues in our city. We created the one number. That was actually a recommendation from our community that we heard loud and clear. We have various options for people to communicate, but they wanted a phone number to call. That is the compassion of our city, wanting to make sure they are communicating that services are needed in front of folks. 311 after-hours calls roll over to our CARE7 line. Chris Charlo is in the audience, and Kim Jackson, and Jessica Wright. It has been a huge lift to start working 24/7, picking up a phone every time someone calls. They ask for grace, that sometimes it’s not picked up, but they are working so hard to make sure those gaps are filled, and we thank them. CARE7 and the Hope Team started co-locating together, recognizing there’s a force multiplier when people work together, and what I call rowing all in the same direction, trying to help and support one another. Our police department also added microbeats in our downtown area to make sure there is safety in mind, with sometimes the unpredictable behavior that we see in the downtown or other areas. The DTA has been a huge partner, our business partner, and we also launched approving a contract that helps with added security in our downtown and our urban core. We launched the hub site publicly with a community messaging, so people can become involved with the crowdsourcing of what I say, helping us solve this national issue. Homeless Strategy Communication Plan, thanks to Nikki Ripley and Suzie, who have been tirelessly working on how do we communicate all this information to our public. And then the Warrant Resolution Program. And I’ll touch on this a little bit later in more detail, but I have to thank our Chief Presiding Judge and Alexis Allen, who have been so responsive to being creative on how do we offer options when people have warrants? And if they take services, can we work with them to have them engage in services as opposed to prison, jail? So more to come on that. So the 60-day, completed co-location of CARE7 and Hope, activated the Hope Volunteer Program, which is still in the works. CARE7 was built on volunteers 30 years ago, so we continue to work on that. That was Judy Tapscott, who was retired employee from the city. Initiated CARE7 PD Co-Response Pilot Program. That means that we want the right people on the calls, and oftentimes, it takes multiple units, not just our police department. We need crisis response counselors to go out and make sure that they are getting in front of the individuals who need the support. Our nation’s in a crisis, folks. I call it the humanitarian crisis right now, and the calls for service are saying so. Community Support Collaborative, we’re looking at working with our procurement office, Tom Dunsting and Michael Green, and I name these names because there’s a lot of people that work on this and they deserve credit. Looking at employment contracts with some nonprofits that we are working with. They are the people who have the connections with the public. Why not contract with them and help us build trust with folks in order to hopefully get them engaged in some services? And then the 90-day, which we’re at, obviously, in October, activating the Full-Time Community Responders and Neighborhood Ambassadors Program. And that is a creative way of creating new neighborhood units, employees, that really are centered and spend time in the neighborhoods, and more to come on that. That is really a thought partner on what used to be our police aides, converting those now to a modern city. And what a modern city needs is people outside their vehicles, helping our entire city, not just one department, understand what’s happening in our alleys or happening in the parks, and being proactive, looking at crime prevention through environmental design. So we’re working with Chief Glover and Chief Anderson in converting and piloting two of those positions, Neighborhood Ambassadors, to work with human services, our parks employees, and see what kind of outcomes we can get in those neighborhoods. I’m very excited about that. Onboarding a data analyst was one of the first things we did as a team. Data doesn’t lie. Data tells us the story better than anyone. So the data analysts started working with human services and making sure they’re compiling that information to help us make decisions. We are a data-driven organization, and that data is helping us. Planning for Business Focus Groups. We have had some meetings, thanks to Wydell Holmes, working with the Chamber and the DTA, and the Tempe Tourism, and Jill Bushbacher from Economic Development. Our business community came to us and said, “How do we help? We see what you’re doing.” And they said, “Our community, our business want to have a voice.” So ETC Institute, as you know, completes our community surveys and our employee survey, and we have contracted with him to work with the Chamber and Strategic Management and Innovation Office to create focus groups with businesses, and not just what you imagine north of the 60, but also including the businesses south of the 60. And those are happening in the next couple of weeks, so more data and information to So Homeless Strategy Plan, congratulating our CARE7 team, who has recently received a licensing for, I’m going to take a step back for a second, the leveraging CARE7 licensing for mental health right in the middle there in 60 days. It’s buried there, but that’s the lead. So CARE7 applied for licensing and they received it, and you, this is the first time you’re going to hear about that. What that means for our organization, the generous dollars you have given us, this community, we now are able to apply for reimbursement. So every touch, every engagement, every trauma counseling session that they are having, they are now, will be able to apply for reimbursement. And what that looks like. So service categories, mental health and crisis intervention, that has happened in this fiscal year. So looking at those number of services, so if we look at compiling that to dollars and applying for reimbursement, is basically what you see in your right column of $258,000 reimbursement. They spend a lot of time with folks in this community, but it’s important to also be wise and look for every opportunity to get that fiscal responsibility back as much as possible. Progress indicators, data-driven organization. We always say, we start with the end in mind in asking ourselves, where do we want to be as an organization? And we look at indicators not only as our compass, but for the community to understand, what are we reaching for? And we came up with these five. We knew that engagements through our Hope Team and CARE7, individuals located through engagements is important. There’s three ways: temporary shelter, being housed, or connected through family and friends. They buy bus passes for people, and that’s one of the questions we always get asked. If they have family out of state, we are generous and we work with individuals to make sure they are reunited with their family. Increasing available housing and shelter, obviously, that’s a goal for every community, right? City provided, whether it’s city-provided, community partners, circle the city if there are medical needs. And then increasing the case management. We know that housing is not enough for people. It has to be holistic, it has to be wraparound services, it has to be case management. Encampments, we want those to go down. We always say, streets are not homes, and we want to make sure that if we see an encampment, we approach them, we understand what services are needed, we offer services, and we triage and remove the encampment and offer better options for people. Point-in-time counts, we know that that is a regional model to count, point-in-time counts, but we also are very graciously thankful that the DTA has offered daily counts for us in the downtown where we see the highest concentrations. And now, also, the Hope Team has provided an additional, instead of just the annual count, they did one in August, and I’ll share those data in a second. Community Report Concerns, we know that we hear loud and clear, we love our community that is very active and tells us what they think, and that comes in through our 311 Council Communicators or CARE7/Hope line. We would like to see those concerns drop, so that’s another indicator for us. Real quickly, thanks to Stephanie Dietrich from my IT department, she created a hub dashboard that people are paying attention to all the updates that we are providing for homeless solutions. The indicators tell people how many engagements, how many touches we have for engagements, housing resolution. The data is being captured and then mapped, so you can see exactly where that’s taken The progress indicators, available housing and shelter. Data alone does not illustrate Tempe’s compassion. I always say that, just like our city’s budget reflects our values, the investments in helping the homeless reflects our values and compassion. So what you see here is a non-congregate shelter occupancy, occupied rooms and unoccupied. The graph on the left, obviously, is by rooms, the graph on the right is by the rate. You might ask yourself, why are we at 92% right now, or we were in September? We keep rooms available, knowing that we want to make sure that we have enough rooms available to meet the needs when we are approaching encampments. And encampments are not just one or two individuals, it’s more. So that number is always varying, but just know that they are working very hard to fill those spaces. But I also wanted to share that our values, and I always say, if you want to know the values of an organization, you look at their budget. So March 2020, Tempe partnered with Maricopa County, and remember, everyone remembers March 2020. They partnered with the county on 10 rooms. That’s how it started. 10 rooms, as a solution to provide safe temporary housing and resources to people during the worst time for this nation. What began as a temporary solution became fully operationalized with 55 rooms by now, and then the contract is being presented to the council in a couple of weeks for you to consider approval for the continuance of those rooms. September 2021, Tempe approved the purchase of the roadway inn. You used, you asked us to use the money from the Affordable Housing American Rescue Refunds, 3.3 millions, to buy that roadway inn. The short term is to use it for transitional housing, to help people off the streets. The long-term, affordable housing in perpetuity, to make sure that we hold on to that available affordable housing in our city. Concurrently, the mayor and council approved $450,000 in grants for our nonprofits, partners, TCAA and Mesa East Valley Center, New Leaf, for additional beds, 30 at TCAA and 32 at New Leaf in Mesa. We’re landlocked, so we always look to our partners also to see what available shelters there are. And then emergency housing units available for domestic violence victims as well. I want to acknowledge Deborah Artiaga, who joined us today in the front row as a partner who’s been working those 90 days with us and coming up with the new solutions, so I thank her for showing up today. Real quickly, more encampment reporting dashboards that I want to make sure people see the address. Streets, as I always say, are not homes. People are identifying encampments, allow our teams to offer services, real quickly, for the resolution of those encampments. The encampments, the spike, the encampment reporting is then looked at, and we recognize that the spike coincides with the projected migration patterns as we addressed the River Bottom in August and September. As you all recall, we talked about people first. When we looked at the River Bottom, we knew we set up a resource center to make sure that we addressed the people. We didn’t touch the debris, we didn’t touch the vegetation, we honored the people that were there, and we worked in getting them services. What you see is some of the migration patterns in the encampments around the area, the spike in August and September. If you recall, it was the first week of September that the final individuals were given services or left the River Bottom, and that was the first week, September 8th, to be exact. More encampment verification maps, this is another way for us to look at clusters, hotspots of areas that we prioritize, is keeping an eye as far as offering services and having our Hope Team reach out, and then they map those. Progress indicators, point-in-time count. Real quickly, the first line you see in the county point-in-time count, you will see a steady increase regionally, and that’s the gray line that you see there. Regionally, it was 83% in unsheltered. 83% increase in our region, or the unsheltered. The second graph, dotted blue line, is Tempe’s unduplicated Tempe and Served from the HMIS system. So you see a sharp increase in the last year people entered the system. Third is the East Valley pit count, what we call the point-in-time count. Obviously, 1,100 there. But then lastly, the solid blue line, regional pit count in January 22 was 384, and in August 2022, 515. 34% increase in seven months for us. So we had one in January, and then we had one in August. You will see another pit count in January for those updated numbers. As I mentioned, thanks to Cape Borders and the Downtown Authority and the Board there, has asked us twice to present, very interested in partnering with us. They offered to do the point-in-time count, and what you see here is the point-in-time count starting September 23rd. As I said, their approach was not, “What are you doing about it?” As sometimes people ask, but they’re saying, “How can we partner and how can we help?” The daily counts are important for us to see the migration patterns, especially during the River Bottom, addressing the River Bottom. So the downtown lake, downtown is the lake to the university and farmer to college, which is the orange line, and then the blue line is the lake area, which is the entire perimeter of the lake and the beach park on both sides. You can see there’s been a sharp decline in our downtown and the point-in-time counts that the DTA provides from September, and then a bit of an increase on September 30th. So this is another graph, identifying progress indicators for 311... So this is another graph, identifying progress indicators for 311. We're tracking all the 311 calls, CARE and HOPE line. CARE and HOPE line has increased tremendously. I think she said it was over 300% increase. I can't imagine. CARE and HOPE line, encampment reporting, monthly totals. The last bar on the right is really showing a three-month illustration of the categories. As you can see, there's been an increase. What we're hoping is to remind folks, right person, right call. If it's unsheltered, you don't need to call the police department unless you feel like there's a crime taking place. Please call our CARE and HOPE line to have our counselors and HOPE team go out. You can call me, that's, that does happen, that does happen.
Okay, so as you can imagine, we'll reflect back on the first slide that I discussed with you and that was the call volume. Once I looked at the data, I was a little shocked at the amount of call volume and the, the hours dedicated to providing service in the river bottom. I shared my concerns with Deputy City Manager Anchowsky, City Manager Chang, as well as I discussed with the police chief, what are some of the things we can do? At that time, we made the decision that we just got, we just had two incident management teams that you all know and had reported out to you through the pandemic, as well as the train derailment in place for both of those events and they were concurrent. And I think the, the city pulled it off. The departments were able to come together, coordinate and collaborate and do amazing work. So we had a very short discussion about what we should do to start to put all the brains together and find a way that we could work through this. And we put together an incident management team. The incident management team was set up to coordinate and align the key people and resources required to meet the incident objectives. Those objectives are stated here in front of you and I'll go over them shortly with you. We also knew that through our experience, we had to put the right people in the right places. And that was another short, short discussion. It's always a little stressful when we identify you as an incident commander because you're going to lead us through this, but we picked the right people. Deputy Human Services Director Paul Bentley and Community Services Director Craig Hayden took the incident commander roles and they took on the responsibility to lead the IMT based on their expertise in these areas. And I wish I could give you all of the section chiefs that we've placed in place throughout this. Again, yesterday we had a meeting and Rosa and I both told them it was our honor to get to report out to all of you the work that they've done and the collaboration that's gone into this. This has not been an easy task by any means, as you can imagine. The IMT, the whole IMT has been committed to a collaborative, respectful and caring process. The objectives which are stated up here on the slide are separated in three separate phases. Phase one is the sheltering. That is where we created the Resource Village. That is where a lot of the outreach has, has been done and we'll, we'll go over a slide again and I know some of you have seen the Resource Village. And again, down here is the outline of the time, or the timeline here that is outlined. As you can see, we are already into October and we are right on time. As a matter of fact, we're, we're ahead in some areas. But phase two is the clearing of the debris and then phase three is when we go into pruning the vegetation, which they are going concurrently right now. That is, both of them are going as tracked. And then I think the, another key piece of this is going to be to maintain that area so we don't get ourselves back into the situation where we were with the fires and the trying to provide a service down in that river bottom.
Quick thing, chief, actually, Vice Mayor Adams has a question.
Yes, I'm just wondering if you're, if you're using, using the Desert Conservation Commission to help you with the clearing of the brush and things, just to make sure everything's okay and we're not losing valuable plants?
Yes, I know we are, we do have a ton of stakeholders that are involved in this and I had told the IMT that if I turn around and look over my shoulder, be prepared for that question. See how that is? I said collaboration and help. He used the word help.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Great question. We've actually got, Richard Atkins is the one urban forester that is leading this effort. It is through city staff working with certified contractors from the debris and also the vegetation side. And he's certainly clearing the path, leading the way, notifying all the U.S. Fish and Wildlife that has, we have an agreement with down in that area, but also with other stakeholders with the county as well.
Is Kim Gaffney Lozavit involved too?
She is aware of it. It is not one of our desert preserves. We, but we are, she is aware, I spoke with her this morning, not about this specifically, but yeah, she's been aware and has made some requests on our behalf.
Okay, very good. She just has such a knowledge base on it, so very good. Thank you for answering my question.
As I said, areas of expertise, incident command.
That's right.
Right, excellent. So in, in phase one, as we said, we created the, or established the Resource Village. This was not only city departments, but this was also stakeholders that were involved in this. Again, we wanted to be as respectful as we could and assist as any way we, we could for this transition out of the river bottom and into facilities that we could offer them and resources that we could offer them. And this again was another team effort. I won't go through everything that we had in, in this area, but it, it was quite impressive to see everybody come together and all the resources placed here before we started to go down and, and ask people to vacate. And then obviously the services again are over here onto the side, side of the slide. Yesterday, our ops, one of our ops chiefs or our op chief, Chris Charleau, who you all know from CARE7, reported out that this is ongoing still. These services are still in place and we are still continuing the outreach, even though we have taken down, that is, phase one has been completed, we have taken down the Resource Village. Doesn't mean the resources are not still there. Next slide, please. So in our engagement in phase one, what has been reported out is that we engaged 75 people, 50 accepted shelter, as you can see, that's 66%. Next slide. How we broke it down, that is IMT broke it down into three separate sections. Again, you're well aware of these, these sections, but where, where we are currently is, is we are working in sections one and two and section three we'll, we'll go to in just a second. Sections, section three is a little more complicated by way of who owns the land and who has responsibility for the area. We know that Tempe PD has a large area of responsibility in there, but land ownership becomes the other tricky piece of the puzzle for us. We are working on that. Commander Kim Hell early on brought together all of the stakeholders. They were all at Tempe PD headquarters. They all did show up and represented their agencies and we had a really good discussion about what we want to do down in this area. And we are currently, the IMT is working to follow it up. Our legal team is working on the legal pieces of that puzzle as I speak. So this is, I think, to give you an idea, as I said, we're working concurrently and the amazing work that's being done in here. Yesterday, this slide is already outdated and probably the number I gave you today is even outdated. As of yesterday, what was reported on the IMT was 49.5 tons have been removed from the river bottom. If you think about 2,000 pounds per ton, that's a heavy lift. What was expressed to us was if you take a medium-sized vehicle, that's roughly the 2,000 pounds. So you line up 50 cars of debris that has been removed from the river bottom. And that's currently where we are. And again, we're continuing to work concurrently in that area to not only remove the debris, but go into the pruning next. Or we are doing that and that's following, phase two is being followed by phase three.
That's me. So additionally to the EMS calls, we thought it would be good to show you also from 2017 to 2022, the calls for service for police. Obviously it shows you an increase, we won't belabor it, but you see where the calls for service along the river bottom. And then as I mentioned, the Team Tempe Business Focused Efforts, they created a Team Tempe, the business alliance, as I call it, Tempe Chamber Downtown Authority and Tempe Tourism. Michael, Colin and Kate and their team have been amazing. They wanted to help contribute, as I said. They are surveying and interviewing our businesses, creating focus groups in October. They are reconvening a, a meeting on November 4th to discuss more options, resources and mitigation tips for businesses and how they can help Team Tempe. Expert advice from police, HOPE and CARE7. They also are involved with Threads and all the other resources that provide services to our unsheltered. So, and what you see on the right is a campaign they're starting, water bottle and resource campaign, reusable bottles that give people the resources on the bottle themselves. So they constantly see it and hopefully will decide to engage.
One more thing real quick. I felt to also share with you that in section three, phase one has been completed in section three, that is, we have evacuated the unsheltered from that area. So we're just working on what would be phase two and phase three, all of the details of that, so thank you.
Thank you. This is a flyer that the DTA helped create as far as resources. Another example of how businesses are supporting initiatives, created their resource guides for downtown community health and safety. It's sometimes hard to navigate, who do I call? And people are always apprehensive, they want to make sure they write, call the right folks. And it takes a while for all of us to learn and, and they created that resource for folks, which is wonderful. Community parks, we have heard, as I say loud and clear from our community, the importance of quality of life for people in our parks. So the team came together and addressed, we would have additional outreach in our parks, HOPE and CARE7, specifically in those what we had called top tier one parks or parks that have been identified as using a lot of resources from the city or a lot of calls for service. And it's a way for us to know that the HOPE team can spend more time there and, because there's a need, as the chief presented to you that previous slide. So Director Craig Hayden has with his team identified updated park rules that are now posted in those parks prohibiting the blocking of access to park amenities, damage to landscaping, you could read there, but also the unarmed security, increased patrols to combat the illegal drugs and the possession of illegal drug paraphernalia such as needles in our parks. The last item is one of the, one of the probably most difficult things actually that we've had to do is we recognize that congregate meals are, been part of our community. And one of the toughest decisions we had to emphasize was the permits for congregate meals services because it's imperative to protect the health and safety of our community. Consolidating services is much more planned and coordinated approach enhances the outcomes for our community. And as I said, it was a tough decision. Those congregate meals became from 50 to 250 and no longer, it needed, it needs permits for us to understand the needs in our parks. Relationships matter for us in Tempe and we hope to continue the work with ARRA's Foundation and Austin Hugs for the Houseless to identify a new path forward as it leads us to shared values and more importantly, a community impact. So we hope we continue that relationship and that working relationship. Future action, campaign for safety on the streets. We just met today about, we have talked, we have seen in other cities signs regarding panhandling. Yesterday, Glendale unanimously approved prohibiting panhandling. Those are the conversations taking place regionally. Tempe is a little different right now. We, we understand, well, I should say, Tempe is different. We do not want to litter our city with a lot of signs that says, please do not give to people asking for money. And that was, that was a tough conversation. What do we want to do? But we want to see change. And we've decided that we want to create a campaign that says just that, that asks people to think about real change, not spare change and giving them a path forward on how to create an impact. Tempe wants to create change and they want to be part of the solution. So we need to create a path forward for our community to do that. Nikki and Suzie, Suzy is going to work on that, the campaign. They presented preliminary ideas and our committee continues to work on that. Shopping carts, picking up service, looking with Jeff Tamilevich Code and others on, and Craig Hayden on picking up the carts that we see all over our community. We don't want them littered. There's a service that help, is helping us, but for right now is our staff. It's different departments picking up those carts that you see in various areas. Salvation Army, as you know, is relocating out of the downtown area. They have approached us about their new facility, but more importantly, thinking up new models of, instead of congregate meals on, on their, on their campus, going to where the people are. So perhaps a partnership with them for our hotels and them providing services. So thanks to Bob Kawa, so we continue that conversation. And then the pilot step into housing. This was a concept that Deborah Artiaga and her team brought to our city just a couple of weeks ago. This is how quickly the things go. It's looking to partner with them on steps to housing from the entry points of I Help to our hotels to what we know, Hometown For All, creating housing in our city. So it's a tiered approach to shelter through I Help and our services and more, and all explaining. What you see here is the changes that, that TCAA has seen in I Help. Increase of seniors in the last few months in I Help. So it's of the total, those are the increases of seniors that we're seeing. Deborah, I think believed, she said that there was someone who's 78 who entered I Help. And it, we know that from our constable that people, the eviction rates are climbing and that the generation that is being evicted is now 55 plus. So we're looking at having conversations about what do we need to do as far as focusing our services and prioritization of, of certain groups and making sure that we're taking care of them. So Chris Charleau, Jessica and Deborah Artiaga's team from TCAA met again today and looking at what is the new social innovation of steps to housing in Tempe and just maybe we become the model for this region, that we had everything in place. So the issues that we heard from TCAA is prolonged stays among employee, employed individuals. At I Help, you have employed working poor. They work during the day and they go to I Help in the evenings where they receive a meal and a place to lay their head. Adults with mobility and disability issues is an increase and I Help not available to second and third shift. So employees are working different shifts. So we need to look at those things. Those are the challenges that we have before us. And the non-congregate shelter options ideal for house-ready participants, which is motels. Making sure that people are ready for graduation into the next step. So the proposed solution is to create a continuum of care of intakes at I Help. Housing prepares, prepares the individual there at I Help for the motel. So you see the stair step, I Help. We're going to start small with a pilot, start with I Help, goes to the motels and then obviously ensuring placement immediately after. What you are all building with Hometown For All is a pathway to making these steps work. And I always say, what motivates people is to see their future before them. And if we're able to identify steps to housing in Tempe, just maybe they will engage in the services. So the target population is congregate shelter, I Help, adults requiring assessment, adults in need of emergency shelter. Megan and Deborah and their team would help us assess that. It's the triage at that entry point. And then moving to the non-congregate shelter, adults prepared for housing placements, adults with mobility or disability issues. So when we started to look at what was happening after the pandemic in our city regarding the unsheltered and what was happening really in this nation, we had some conversations with nonprofits and some residents of our city and our elected officials in living rooms. And we decided that we needed to meet people where they were and we partnered and we thank ARRA's Foundation for getting us in contact with many of the unsheltered that agreed to meet with the mayor, myself, multiple departments at the West Side Center to discuss, help us understand how to motivate people to get into the services that we do have or help us understand what are the barriers? How can we do better? Those conversations started with just a few and they expanded to others who brought other friends. We provided lunch, we invited other departments to join us and we had conversations. Sean Bickings was a member of a mayoral focus group the city had with nonprofits and unsheltered community that would help us better understand the future of unsheltered in Tempe. So what you see before you are the legacy actions we are taking as a city. We are in the very room where Sean and all of us met. Deputy City Manager Keith Burke and Sean Wagner and others will be putting up a plaque and dedicating that room where we met with him, with his picture dedicating to Sean Bickings. We have also are working on or have already rescue tools for throw bags for our officers, flotation devices in our lake, at our lake and working through our risk management, water consultant on safety, ideas of where to place the flotation devices in our city, in our lake and not just our lake, in the Kiwanis also is the conversation. Additionally, Additionally, Chris Charlo from Care 7 has been meeting with the chiefs, Andre Anderson and Chief Glover and Kim Hale, to talk about co-response. Once again, if homelessness, calls for service regarding homelessness, homicide, domestic violence, and sexual abuse, making sure that we have counselors that are ready to go with our officers, and they are going with our officers. Sometimes those are unpredictable situations, and we need to make sure our employees are safe. Police will be there, but also if, if, it's determining who takes the lead and who's the lag, as I say. Once you determine safety, then the counselors kind of step in. I really applaud them. Those have been heavy conversations, trying to work out how to make sure that everyone stays safe, and, and keeping our community safe. Fourth is our warrant resolution program. This is actually, I believe, one of the recommendations Sean made in our meetings, was regarding, many of the unsheltered are sometimes nervous about having conversations with our counselors or Hope team or anyone else because of the warrants. And resoundingly, Chief, our presiding judge and Alexis Allen went to work, and they said, there's a way, there's a way for our Tempe to do this. And they are now are having conversations with other cities to see if we could create either quarterly, I know they stood up the warrant resolution program at the Resource Center next to the river bottom as an option for people, and we continue to work that. Officer training and transformation of policing. Our Chief, Chief Glover asked our officers to go through additional training, not just in the rescue tools, but also thinking about the communities we serve. I want to acknowledge, in the audience we have with us, Tari, Sean's mother, who I believe will be making a statement shortly, once we are done with these slides. Thank you. And then, lastly, as I mentioned before, Tempe's commitment has been longstanding. It hasn't been just the 90 days that we've been working. That is a collective effort of the city to make sure that the funding is there. We always receive a yes, what can we do? Homeless programs and services you see before you, you don't need me to read those numbers. Those are incredible numbers. And in that mid-year that you see in the green, that fiscal year '22, mid-year funding, 262 mid-year, that doesn't really happen. I've been with the city for 30 years. It's very infrequent that mid-year supplementals or mid-year approvals happen. And that, in part, was basically for the additional Hope team, and who we needed to make sure that we're offering services in the community. I share this with you because this has made a difference. It's made a difference in order for us to be saying, to say, this is where you can go, and hopefully stay in Tempe. The funding and investments of our city are outstanding, and it, and when you compare it to, I was looking at the State Housing Trust Fund, and what the legislation had passed recently, 60 million towards affordable housing, and all the wraparound services that are needed. If you, if you look at our Hometown For All alone, you have $10 million in the last couple of years. So, when I look at this, I think, I think Tempe is actually making a difference. And once we start building with that funding, buying the property, building, and creating that pathway, we have created the affordable housing. And in my book, it is the social innovation. And then, lastly, speaking of social innovation, lucky for us, we were selected by Bloomberg-Harvard to enter in what they called an innovation track. We can choose anything, to work at it for a year, for three hours every week, 13 employees, and try to come up with solutions to not just local issues, but to national issues. Yours truly, we chose homelessness. And I thank the team, because if you try to carve out three to four hours every week on your schedule, it has been an effort, and a lot of grace and forgiveness when we have to jump on a different call. But I just share this with you, because they saw Tempe Works as a program that's innovative. And we're looking at two prototypes. We're in the prototypes and testing focus right now. So, in the fall, we will be testing what they seem to think, and we believe, might be a game changer on homelessness. So, it's the Tempe Works 2.0, as I call it, looking at, we've met with businesses, businesses in Tempe, we met with them, and they are resounding, yes, we will give jobs to people who are unsheltered, let's figure it out. So, the team is looking at expanding that program. And once again, Tempe-based, which I think is outstanding, it showcases this community in, in ways that are unbelievable. And then, at-risk early signals for prevention. One of the areas that we knew, we know we need improvement is early warning signals, just like when you go to a physician, and they ask you a lot of questions about your ailments, and then they say, well, those are predictive of this, this condition. We believe that we might be able to create an at-risk signals for, for at-risk homelessness. Obviously, then looking at our financial inclusion, and looking at ways to help people build wealth in our community. So, more to come on that. I just wanted to give you an update, that we are at the prototype and testing phase. And if this goes well, then it becomes, it's replicated in other cities of this, in this nation. And then, lastly, Karen Hope Line, just reminding our, our community, I know they don't need a reminder, I think people have this, this phone number memorized, but I just wanted to thank all of you. I wanted to thank the people that sit behind me, the people who are not here today, for just a lot of work, lot of work. So, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Rosa, thank you, Chief, really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Before we go on, I know there's separate council members I know who have comments. I did want to, I know Rosa acknowledged her earlier, but I did want to invite Sean Bickings' mom, Tari, to come up. I know she has a statement she would like to read, so I'd like to invite her to join Rosa and Chief Reese.
Thank you for letting me make a statement today. I'm going to try to get through without crying, so excuse me. Sean was a quiet and calm person, and he would give you the shirt off his back if he knew you needed it more than him. He loved rock music, but was always willing to take a dancing class, a step dancing class with me, and he turned out to be better than me. He also loved anime and horror movies. He admired Tyler LaPerry and Maya Angelou, and his favorite actor was Danny Trejo. If I asked him to come home to visit at any time, and he thought I really needed him for something, he would, would, and he did on several occasions over the years. I would try to go see Sean at least twice a month at J.C. Park, and sometimes I would just miss him, which would break my heart. The times I missed him, Catherine from the Aris Foundation would take a photo of him and send it to me via Messenger to let me know that he was okay, and I was always grateful for that. Those times I did see Sean, I would bring him clothes, shoes, gift cards for foods, and sometimes food. And sometimes he would take them from me, and sometimes he wouldn't, because he would tell me I would probably need it more. He asked me on several occasions not to buy him new things, new clothes or new shoes. And a few weeks ago, I learned why he asked me not to do that. It was because people would take them from him. And that makes me sad, because if he thought they really needed, he would have given it to him willingly. Every time I saw Sean, we always told each other we loved each other. And I did love him more than anything in this whole world. I have one message, a voicemail message on Messenger that he left for me. I'm sorry. To wish me a Happy Mother's Day, and to tell me he loved me, and I find myself listening to that over and over again. Because of my compromised immune system and COVID-19, Sean would not let me get close to him, or let me touch him. So, when I saw him for the last time after his death at the funeral home, I hadn't given Sean a hug in almost two years. And that's one of my biggest regrets. And it saddens me that I was not able to hold or touch my child in that two years. I wanted everyone to know that the day that he was encountered, he was not running from the police. And it saddens me that the media keep reporting it that way. He may have been trying to avoid the police because of the abuse that had taken place when he had been in jail before. But them telling him that he was running away from the police makes it seem like he was some kind of violent criminal, and that is in no way, shape, or form Sean. And I wish they would get that right. Anyone who met Sean or knew him, know him, just as he appeared when everybody saw him for the last time. I can only pray that nothing like what happened to Sean happens to anyone else, and that no mother has to hear their child ask for help, and someone tell them, if they need help, it will not be there for them. Thank you for listening to me, and for anyone and everyone's support and prayers and actions to make a difference to come. Thank you. Oh, I want to thank the ladies from my neighborhood who came to support me today, and this is my sister Serena, and one of my best friends, Almyra. I told them to come up because I didn't think I'd be able to get through that statement. Thank you.
I'd now like to open up to council. I know that several people had comments or questions, or, let's start with Councilmember Kitty.
Thank you, Mayor Woods. Before my comments, I'd just like to express my sympathy to the Bickings family, and thank you for coming here and sharing those words with us today. I know it wasn't easy, but I appreciate you, and of course, your friends and family for, for being here. So, thank you for that. I want to thank Chief Reese and Deputy City Manager Inchowski for this presentation. Obviously, it was very, very thorough, and rightfully so, because the city has done a lot of work in this space over the last, well, for a long time, but we really kind of accelerated it with the 90, 60, 30-day plan. And from what you're showing us, it appears to be on track and working. And this is very delicate work, and it's hard work to do, and it's work that you have to get just right in order to not create, one, some sort of harm, or, two, some sort of public relations backlash. And as far as I can tell, you guys have executed this plan perfectly. And I know there's a lot of moving pieces, a lot of departments, so I just want to express my kudos to both of you and your teams, and of course, our community stakeholders and partners for bringing this along and doing it so competently. I'm, I'm very, very impressed. And I was very worried when this was starting about something going wrong, and the city looking bad, and I'm so glad that those fears were unfounded. So, thank you to you both, and of course, to your teams as well. I'm very pleased about this Tempe Works 2.0 business, so you better believe I'll be asking for updates on that, and wanting to know what's happening with that. I promise not to do it at every one of me and Councilmember Hodges' meetings, but know that if you want to come to every single one and tell me what's going on, I'd be very, I'd be, I'd be happy to have you. So, this is great work that you two and your teams and everyone involved in the city has done. So, I just want to express my gratitude to you for that. And again, I'm very, very happy with the Tempe Works expansion. So, with that, I will stop talking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate it. Next, I'll turn to Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to Ms. Inchowski and Chief Reese for this presentation. I have so much to say. I, I've, I've tried to have these, have these things occur for the last four years. I have desperately tried to, to change the direction of, of our, where we were going with our human services, and it fell on deaf ears. And I'm sure a lot of people got tired of me complaining about it, but this is the reason why I fought so hard to get these things done, because I knew our community could do better. I knew our city could do better. I knew our city could work with our partners better than we were. You know, everybody was in their own little box, and they didn't want to play with one another, and, and this is a marked change. And because of this marked change, this is our results. All these things, Rosa, and, and Greg, that you, you have been doing and working together has drastically changed our direction for the good. And I was passionate about it. I'm a social worker. I knew we could do better, but I could not get anybody to listen to me. So, I am so, I'm, I'm, I'm happily frustrated, but this is like the best news I've gotten on council since I've been on for four years. Since Ms. Inchowski has taken over, we have completely transformed our human services for the better, and that cannot be left unnoticed. I'm not done yet. Your move to combine the Hope team and Care 7, I've, I've fought for, for years also, because it was silly to have two separate camps. That was silly. You've got to work together, you're all social workers. You don't do things, have a similar cause and do things separately. So, thank you for leading this in a positive way. Our park rangers, for four years, I have said, we need our park rangers back, and it fell on deaf ears. And our parks were under control. Those park rangers were city employees, and as a result, they got to know the, the people that were out in parks, and developed relationships with them. We didn't have all this turnover and all of that. They worked with the police department. They worked under the police department. So, they knew the police officers well, they had the rapport, and it was a horrible thing when we got rid of the park rangers. And I will continue to fight to get our park rangers back, because it worked before. It's like we don't have to recreate the wheel. Park rangers worked before. So, I will be pushing very hard, Mr. Mayor, for our park, park rangers to come back. And I'm also so glad that you're reaching out and working with our partners, like Deborah's agency. And I'm also so glad that you're reaching out and working with our partners like Deborah's agency. This has needed to happen for years. And Deborah's agency has an enormous amount of resources. We have a lot of resources. And I'm so glad that we're getting all of our resources, many more than Deborah's, I know. But I wanted to point that out because that's something I really was frustrated about in the past. So thank you, Deborah, for coming tonight. Thanks for being willing to continue to work with our city, even though you weren't necessarily treated real well in the past. So I really appreciate you coming. I appreciate Rosa working with you. And this is what I've wanted for so many years. So this is great. I'm so happy that we're working with Kate Borders and her team. That's another area that, you know, needed to happen. And I mean, they're right here, you know, engage your resources. They're right here. It doesn't seem that difficult, but that's what you've done now. And Kate is an amazing leader in her own right. And you've got all kinds of incredible leaders now at the table. It's going to make your life a lot different and a lot better and a lot more fun. Quite frankly, let's start having some fun because we're getting a lot of wins on this, right? So I'm very happy about that. You're just doing amazing work. And I think that, Rosa, I know you work all the time. Chief, I know you work all the time. You're always here at work and available. You take my calls all the time, no matter what time of the day or night I call. And you're the type of leaders that this organization needs. And we are going to be very famous someday for our homeless approach. We're going to put us on the map as the leaders in this country for how we're working with our homeless and solving problems and affordable housing, our hometown for all. We are going to be on the map. You all are going to be giving presentations at National League of Cities and everywhere else about what we've done for best practices. And I am so proud of both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Let me next go to Councilmember Navarro, then Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Adams. I understand your passion and definitely felt. I know it's often frustrating for a number of years. And I think in public safety, we share this frustration too and understand it. I want to first recognize Sean's mom. I don't care who you are, having kids, wherever your kids are at. It's a tough thing to do. So, but with all this said, I know that this city, and I know this council, and the councils before us have supported what we try to do, what we try to initiate, and what we try to achieve. I'm with MAG and I'm on the Human Service Committee. And I have to say, by far out of the valley, this city gets recognized for its innovation. By far out of the valley, this city is leading the way for other cities to take advantage of what we've done, to take advantages of the resources we're developing, the change that we're trying to make, and being innovative on making those change. And I have to say that I'm more than proud to be part of this city in so many different ways because it takes a commitment from all departments. And Rosa and Greg, you've done a great job on helping lead in that. But I also want to recognize PD, that has to take a lot of this too. And also Public Works and all the other people, but CARE7s and the social workers. It's a collective team. But when I recognize PD because, and fire and everyone else, this is a portion of their job. This is a portion of the other things everyone has to do. Nothing stops with crime. Nothing stops with dealing with events in our city, calls of service, every one of those things. That does not stop. And we're understaffed doing these things. And not only understaffed on the front lines, we're understaffed behind the scenes. And we're still pushing this thing away, forward. It upsets me when you get critiqued from the sidelines on, "We're not doing enough. We didn't do this. I saw this person said this." Going through third-party, vicariously living through third-parties, getting information to set their agenda to downgrade what this city has done. It is more than frustrating, knowing that this city has stood up to a lot of other things that other cities don't do. So with that said, I know that we're not perfect. And I know that we need more help, and that's a hard thing to do. I know that in the city of Phoenix, we have funding for 10 CR vans. And they still cannot get them staffed all to the T that that council wants them to. It is hard to get the right person. It is hard to get a person to stay dedicated and to stay involved for years. The turnover is crazy. And people still criticize that we're not doing enough. I just want to recognize the people that stay in these positions to fight is crucial. And I give them all kudos.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Councilmember Hodge, then Councilmember Chin.
I just want to say, let me put my little thing down so you can see me. I want to say to Sean's mom, from one mom to the other, every tear that she felt, it broke my heart to hear her story. And it's just, it's just hard on that. I'll leave that at that. I want to say, I'm one of the newest council members, so I'm coming in at the beginnings. But I want to thank all of our staff because I see, when you came in, the minute that I came in, Arlene and I, you've been meeting with us. You've brought this to us right away. You've been giving solutions. You're asking us what we can do, what we think. I appreciate that. Andrew, thank you for changing the org. I mean, things have changed. It looks like it has since Rosa's taken over. I want to say from Rosa, I spent just a couple of days with Rosa just last week. And I'll tell you, her commitment is beyond what you would ever believe. I mean, in the middle of every meeting, she took, we would be in the heart of a conversation. And Tempe came first. Every conversation, she came back and said, "Yeah, that was something about homeless or something about this or something about that." She takes it serious. She takes it passionate. She would be up all night. I talked to her the next day and it's like, "Yeah, I was up till like 1:00 in the morning doing this." So I see it. And I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart to see the passion, the look. When we were at other, we were in another city, and the look she saw, she visually looked at all the unsheltered in Chicago. And what she was looking and saying, "What we can do different here in Tempe." It never stopped the whole entire time. So I did notice that. I just want to say thank you in public. Greg, to all the fire and police, thank you for all that you do. It's not an easy job. It's not going to be solved tomorrow. But every day, we take a bit off of it and a bit off of it. And Councilmember Navarro, I am 100% with you. If we don't keep the strong people there in employment, we can't do, we can't go any further than that. It's all about the employment. It's all about, we're so, as people on the outside, we're so easy to criticize what we don't see. We're not in that circle. It's so easy for us to sit back and say, "Tempe is not doing enough," or "Our fire is not doing enough," "The police is not doing enough." And that is not true. No one's in that circle. But they can only see the outside of what they think they see. And now that I'm sitting in this seat right here, I get to see a whole nother side that I didn't even know. So I just want to take the time to appreciate all that you do. Your whole system, the fire, police, HOPE, everybody. Everybody together makes a difference. And I just want to thank you guys from the bottom of my heart and every Tempe employee because I know we all take this to bed every night with us. It's not just something that the council members feel frustrated about. I know we all do as a city. So I just want to say thank you and appreciate everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Let me go to Councilmember Chin, then followed by Councilmember Garland.
Let me first open by thanking you. Thank you, Deputy Manager Inchowski and Chief Reese for your leadership. But I also want to thank the rest of the Tempe staff and our community partners for this collective work. Every time I spoke with either of these two, they always pointed back at everyone else consistently. This was hard. This is. It remains. We will continue to work on this. It's hard. It's complex. And many of you stepped into tasks and areas where no one else has dared venture. No other community, no other staff, no other city. And I think we're on the right track. It's hard work. You've all made some really hard decisions. I thank you for that. I'm grateful to work with all of you. One thing that needs to be pointed out is, along the way, you've all been very humane and respectful in every step. And I thank you for that and very proud to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Councilmember Garland.
Thank you. You guys are great. I love the energy in all of the stuff that we're doing. I love the innovation. I love that it is a project that gets done because all of us are working together. And it is a team. It's all of us. I think there's a lot of things that started moving, Andrew, when he put out the org chart and everything kind of got moved around a little bit. I looked at that org chart. I remember calling Andrew and going, "Okay, this rocks. This is going to set us up to be even more successful than we have been." So thank you, Andrew. But I just want to say that working with you guys on this project has, it's been fulfilling to me to see that the reasons why I'm in Tempe and the reasons why probably a lot of us are here is that we love the city and we love the people in it, all people. And Rosa, as you said earlier, it's about people first. And I don't think that there's one thing on these steps and any of these slides that you presented that we didn't look at this as people first, all of us, everybody. I mean, I'm thinking about Judge Kane and Alexis coming out. It's people first. It's not like, "How many warrants do you have?" "No, I don't have the time for you." It's, "I have the time. Let's make a difference in your life." And I think that's what's really important about what we're doing is we are making a difference in people's lives. It's important to us to be compassionate and considerate and kind to everybody. That's what we're supposed to be doing. But it's also important for us to be looking at the public safety and making sure that all of our residents are safe, everybody, every human in this community. We want to be safe. And we lead with that and we always have. And I think that's what's really important. I think that's why this is working. It's that Incident Management Command that you guys brought together. It's the Resource Village where people got to go and really, I was sitting out there. I saw two people come off the river bottom and walk right into the Resource Village and meet with people in there. It's amazing. It's working because we're all working together. Because as you have said many times, Rosa, and I repeat this from you all the time, you don't know this, but I always tell people like, "Yeah, well, Rosa says, you know, we're in this boat. We all going to be rowing in the same direction." Well, we're all rowing in the same direction, it seems like with this, and I think it's wonderful. Just a couple silly things I wrote on my notes, 49.5 tons of debris. Holy smokes. That's a lot. And that's not even considering the invasive brush and things that you'll be taking out, right? This is still, we're not even done with that much, right?
It's probably even higher today, huh, Craig?
That is absolutely amazing to me. It just, yeah. It just tells you how much, yeah. So it just tells you how much that really needed to get done and what we needed. We're doing the right thing. It's hard. And yes, we, you know, do get people that have been grumpy with us about the way that we're doing the things. But there is not one single person that's been working on this that I can't tell you has the most incredible heart. We lead with our heart. We lead with compassion and we're doing it. And we're making changes. And the partnerships that we have with our outside partnerships, the DTA, all of those things are making a difference. You guys are wonderful. Everybody, thank you so much for all of our city staff and even the ones that are not here. Thank you so much for all the work that you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Just make a couple of quick comments because, I mean, actually, most of what I was going to say has already been said by my colleagues. So I really appreciate everyone's comments this evening. Just wanted to once again thank Sean Vickings' mom, Terri, for being here. That takes an incredible amount of inner strength to do what she did. And I just wanted to thank her for being willing to come here to these chambers and actually address the council and obviously address the people watching at home as well. So I just wanted to thank her very publicly. And I just wanted to make sure that I thanked our staff and our community partners. There's been an incredible amount of work done over the last three months alone. When you see what's happened with human services, our police department, fire, medical rescue, and a lot of our nonprofit partners like Tempe Community Action Agency and Salvation Army, Downtown Tempe Authority, there's so many people who are doing this work each and every day. It's just incredibly impressive. And just sort of to reiterate, I mean, the work, you know, Chief Deputy City Manager Inchowski that you've done has been just absolutely phenomenal. I was, you know, watching all the slides and going, "My gosh, like all of this incredible." And you're such a data person. Like, you've gotten me much more into talking about data than I probably normally would have. But seeing the way that it's not just, these aren't just simply hunches that you and Chief Reese, the great work you do leading our fire and medical rescue team, they're not based on hunches. They're based on actual data. And that's how we're making decisions. And that's why we're moving the needle so much. It's part data and just the insistence on being as exact as we possibly can on things. But it's also just the people. I mean, there are so many exceptional people in this organization who are working round the clock each and every day, and I mean, seven days a week. Many of the people sitting in this room, I am on the phone with. It's not Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. I'm on the phone with them on Saturdays and Sundays. We're having conversations. Sometimes because there's something going on that needs immediate attention. Sometimes just because we have some kind of an idea for what we think would move the city forward in a very positive way. And we're talking on Saturday and Sunday just to get a jump on Monday. But that is, and that's not me always calling them. That's many times them calling me and saying, "Hey, I have an idea. I was going for a run this morning and I thought of something that we might be able to do that would even continue to improve our city services." So I just wanted to say, I mean, the staff that works here at the city of Tempe are absolutely incredible. And I said once again to, you know, Chief Deputy City Manager Inchowski and to Chief Reese and, you know, Chief Glover and our human services team and all the work that they do. And of course, once again, our outside partners, our nonprofits like Deborah Artiaga, Tempe Community Action Agency, I just can't thank you enough for all the work that you do. This is not easy work, but you do it with such grace and compassion. And I really do think that we are leaders, as Vice Mayor Adams said, not only in the valley, but frankly, nationally, when it comes to the kinds of approaches that we're actually using. And so I just wanted to say thank you for everything and for the partnership and for everyone coming together from our staff to our nonprofit partners to make this a reality. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members.
Thank you.
Next up, Item 3A, which is our 2022 Water, Wastewater, and Stormwater Rate Study Recommendations. And I see Tom Dunzing, our CFO and Deputy City Manager, Tara Ford, Municipal Utilities Director, and Andy Burnham, Vice President of StanTech Consulting LLC. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Very difficult presentation to follow, so just kind of bear with us a little bit. To my far right, Tara Ford, Municipal Utilities Director. And to my immediate right, Mr. Andy Burnham of StanTech Consulting, Vice President. So tonight, we're here to present the recommendations of the 2022 Water and Wastewater Rate Study, go over what we've been doing, certainly take any feedback from the council. I'll just introduce just a few things. When we stepped into this Water, Wastewater Rate Study, there's a few things that we looked at. One is, we looked at it with a conservation lens. Another thing we did is we introduced to the council the prospect of a stormwater fee. And you'll see we're recommending that tonight. And you'll see what the impact of that has on customer bills. Public input, very important part of this process, leading up to tonight and after tonight, when we eventually bring back recommendations based on your input for final adoption. And lastly, please know that this rate study is based in data. We have a tremendous amount of data that we use to develop these rates, from water usage to measuring wastewater outflow. So it really helps us to create rates that are fair and equitable across all customer classes. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tara and Mr. Burnham will do the majority of this presentations. Tara?
Welcome, Mayor and council. So in this rate study, as Tom said, we focused on water conservation as we were also looking at the data. And as you all know, we had- And as you all know, we have the AMI, the automated metering infrastructure, so we have real data, it's not based on assumptions, so I wanted to keep that one of the points. And another point in this, we are recommending changing from a five-tier structure to a four-tier structure, which Andy will give great detail about. This year, we performed a strength and loading study on our wastewater, so it's our return flow, that has not been done in many, many years, so that gives us a better idea of the wastewater leaving and the strength and loading and how we should appropriately bill our customer classes. So that's new this year as well. We touch on flood irrigation, and then recommissioning of our Kyrene Water Reclamation Facility also was taken into consideration, and that is a large focus on conservation in the future as well. And keeping in mind all of our council priorities, as you can see up here, safe drinking water, customer service satisfaction, which is extremely important, we've already reached out to many customers, gone to various meetings, heard the feedback, implemented that already in, and then we will touch on that later in the presentation as well, along with water conservation and efficiency. So I will now turn it over to Andy. And another thing I'd say, this presentation is about 10 to 15 minutes, it's not super long, so if you'd like to stop us in between, you can, and we can discuss, or we can wait till the end, but it is, it's a fairly short presentation. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Tara. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Wanted to go through just a bit about the approach for the rate study. As has been mentioned by both Tara as well as Tom, it's very much based on identifying proportional allocations of cost using your local data, whether that's from your various metering infrastructure that you have in place today, or some sampling in studies that you've done recently that really support an understanding of customer usage characteristics and how they receive and utilize the service. And that's really at the heart of this. And as part of the process, as was mentioned, both at the beginning and then subsequent to today, the customer engagement will continue to be a focal point to make sure that we're incorporating that comment and input at the beginning of the study, as has been mentioned, but then also gauging reaction to the proposed modifications that were identified to make sure they're hitting the mark and are consistent with community expectations. Also, as has been mentioned, I've got a couple of slides today to just highlight a couple of programs. Really, when we think about stormwater or some of our environmental services, we wanted to identify those costs and have an understanding of how might be the best way to capture and recover those costs today, and setting maybe a springboard for the future, and then also having a good understanding of the cost of flood irrigation and what that looks like in terms of rate options for continuing to cover the cost of that program as well. Rate studies generally have, you know, four steps centered around three fundamental questions. The first is, how much revenue do we need to cover ongoing operating capital costs to the system? Once we've identified what those requirements are, we then go to the next question of how should those costs be allocated to our different types of residents and businesses within the community? And once we've established that distribution, the third question is, how do we collect it? Through a series of charges based on meter size or how much water is used by the individual resident or business. And as part of the process, we then ultimately want to communicate the impacts of those proposed rates and fees to the various types of users, so they understand the impacts and what those costs are associated with their usage characteristics. So, big picture from a financial perspective, or how much do we need? From looking at your current operating expenses, capital improvement programs, and existing resources, we've identified an overall increase in water revenues as needed to meet those requirements of about 5.5% for fiscal year 2023. For wastewater, it's a more modest increase of about 2.5% to meet those requirements that have been identified. Part of those increases do consider the potential implementation of a stormwater and environmental fee of $3 per month for each account, and also assumes that we achieve a 50% cost recovery with our flood irrigation rates for that particular program. Having identified those requirements, we then move into an allocation process. There are several methodologies published by industries like the American Waterworks Association that really provide the guidance and the methodologies of the how, and we use your data to perform the analysis. And having conducted these studies every couple of years, you don't see too significant of changes typically from one year to the next. In this particular case, we need a 5.5% overall increase in revenue for the water system, and this chart shows for each of the different kind of customer classifications or types, how that needs to be distributed based upon how they use the system and their characteristics of service, in terms of the number and sizes of meters that they have. Once we've identified those cost allocations to each customer class, we then go into that rate design component. And you currently have today a monthly service charge that varies based on meter size. It's intended to capture certain costs that are administrative related, associated with issuing bills and providing customer service, but then another part of your kind of readiness to serve costs, and those are scaled by meter size, so customers that have larger use on those larger meters pay more for those costs. As part of this study, we've looked at an opportunity to lower these costs slightly, these service charges slightly, to promote affordability for lower volume use, which also then provides an incentive for conservation by putting more revenue recovery in variable charges. And so as you'll see on the schedule, the proposed monthly service charges for each of the meter sizes are lower than what you have in place today, consistent with those two objectives. And then when we look at the variable part of the rate structure, we looked at single family first, and as part of the study, we wanted to modernize how we looked at the tiers to take into account your current demand patterns, as well as industry data about usage profiles. And so we're recommending a four-tier system with tier one based on indoor water use that will accommodate that for most family sizes based on current data, and it's consistent with your median use within the residential class in the city. About half of your customers use that amount or less throughout the year. We then looked at reasonable allowances for irrigation based on a distribution of your parcels and how much irrigation area that they have, and how much water they need to support that irrigable area. And so we looked at a 67th percentile property, so basically a little bit past the midpoint for sizing tier two, and then we looked at a larger lot, actually at the 95th percentile of your lot sizes within the community, to say how much irrigation would we need based up on the typical irrigation area in those larger lots. So again, a very data-driven approach, based on your data and current information, to develop these tier sizes. And so as it relates to your structure today, as Tara mentioned, you currently have a five-tier system with graduated rates that are, again, are consistent with providing a conservation message to larger usage, but they also recognize the costs associated with meeting those greater demands. We're recommending that be simplified and consolidated to a four-tier system, so slightly more usage in the first tier that will accommodate more indoor usage for larger families at a lower rate, and then looking at having the second and third tiers based upon those typical irrigation profiles, but still providing a conservation signal for those higher uses that get above even that reasonable allowance for those larger lot sizes. But we have more than single-family customers to think about as well as part of the rate setting process. We identified those cost allocations for all the other customer classifications as well within the community, for multifamily, commercial, industrial customers, separate landscape meters, even temporary construction meters. And so these rates have been updated to reflect the cost of service to each class and how much revenue we'll be collecting from them based on those fixed service charges. So again, cost-based rates for each of these classifications as well. On the wastewater side, as Tara mentioned, having conducted the strength and loading study, we have data now to be able to do a cost of service allocation for the wastewater system. This type of study hasn't been recently conducted, in fact, there haven't been rate adjustments for the wastewater side in over five years. So this is an opportune time to leverage that current data to really understand how our costs should be distributed between our different customer classifications as part of this process. And so you can see here, there's some small variances between the different customer classifications that you would expect not having conducted a study, in leveraging current data that really shows different trends in wastewater characteristics, more so than what we've seen in the past. So similar to the water system, we looked at the wastewater fixed charges and are recommending slight reductions to those, again, consistent with the affordability objectives that we're talking about and putting more cost recovery in the variable rates. Combined these fixed service charges for water and wastewater will still capture about 20% to 25% of our revenue streams, and still in line with industry norms and levels consistent with what the rating agencies would like to see. On the volumetric side, this is where we have some changes for the wastewater system that are being proposed, updating the single-family and multifamily rates per 1,000 gallons to reflect the part of the cost of service not captured in those fixed charges, but trying to do some simplification or consolidation on the non-residential side or the commercial side. Based on the data that we've seen in that strength and return flow study, there's an opportunity to consolidate certain rate classifications to have a consistent rate. So we're looking at a commercial low-strength category and a commercial high-strength category, but simplifying your rate structure to just have those two types of customer classes for commercial. And for industrial, through this process with the data that we have, we were able to identify unit cost for volume as well as for the waste pollutants, total suspended solids and chemical oxygen demand, so that now we have the ability going forward to charge each individual industrial customer, this would be like ASU or microchipped or UDA, based upon their specific data that we're collecting each month for each of those measurements. And so that's something that we'll be looking to move to and phase in over the next few years. So what does all this mean for your typical customers? We've kind of prepared three different comparisons of that total utility bill, this is the way they'll see all these changes, is with all the services on the utility bill, so we've brought in solid waste cost as well as the proposed stormwater fee. And so if you start with a box that's on the left, that typical usage of 8,000 gallons per month, you can see the current total utility bill for all those services, $81.69, that would go up to $84.98. That total change would be about $3.29 or 4%. And we've identified below the bar charts just the changes and the various components of the bill, so that you can see what those individual drivers are. And the range of increase goes up as you go to more usage. So if you look at the 15,000 gallon center chart, you can see there it's about a $7.66 increase in that monthly bill, or about 7%. And then for a customer with a 1-inch meter, a very high amount of water use at 70,000 gallons, you can see there that has the largest dollar change on the bill at $10.51, about 2.4% change on the bill. And so we did not only the bill impact analysis, but also some local benchmarking, again, from that total utility bill perspective, so aggregating all the utility service charges and seeing how you stand versus other communities in the region. And so you can see for each of these same types of user profiles, that you currently stay in about that third or fourth lowest cost position against their current rates today. So these are our proposed rates, recommended rates for fiscal '23. We don't have knowledge exactly of what their plans are for rate adjustments, many of which will likely have increases as they move into next year, so this is, I would consider it a conservative benchmarking comparison, because we don't know what those increases will likely be for the other agencies. Two programmatic elements that I want to call out before we start kind of wrapping things up. The first was, through the cost allocation process, we were able to identify for water and wastewater costs associated with stormwater services or environmental programs, and we've identified in those blue boxes at the top of the slide, they represent about $1.5 million of annual cost within the Water and Wastewater Fund. Several agencies in the area have stormwater or environmental fees to really start tracking and recovering these types of costs as they expand over time, ultimately moving more towards capital investments and as regulatory requirements increase, being able to track and recover those costs very clearly in their revenue recovery streams. We also identified as part of this analysis, costs for these similar activities in other city departments outside of the Water and Sewer Fund, and so that represents about another $1 million if you were to add those together. All told, the current utility cost component would represent about $3 per account for those current environmental programs and stormwater activities that are in the Water and Wastewater Fund, and that's a very consistent level of fee for these environmental and stormwater charges that we see locally in the region. And so that's the support for that recommendation, and it sets the stage for you to go forward in terms of expanding the program potentially to include other costs as they increase from investment decisions you make or from regulatory requirements, and it sets the ability for you to look at also additional cost recovery mechanisms or how you charge it in the future by establishing one today. The last program that we looked at specifically was flood irrigation. This represents about 900 customers in the city that have the service in about 16 parks. The cost of service analysis indicated that today we're presently recovering about 40% of our cost. In past studies, we've looked at cost recovery strategies and rate adjustments that were targeting about a 50% cost recovery level as a basis for making adjustments to the rates. It's not necessarily a formal policy, it was just a guidepost that was established in past studies, and so we've developed a plan that would again achieve a 50% cost recovery, as shown here on the screen with a 6% increase in 2023, and then subsequent 5% increases to get us to that 50% cost recovery over time. And that was one of the programmatic recommendations that we had as part of the study as well. So before I wrap up, I just want to leave you all with a bit of context in terms of water and sewer rates. So I'm fortunate to have the opportunity to do this work in a lot of places across the United States, and the costs in southwest United States, and in particular in Tempe, are very reasonable when you consider what the cost of similar services are in other parts of the country. All utility systems deal with similar challenges to different degrees of aging infrastructure, regulatory requirements, operational cost inflations, changes in demands, and I think the key thing to take away from this chart is that continuing to have a high level of service at a low cost requires ongoing financial management in order to balance your use of existing resources and adjusting your revenue streams modestly to make sure that you can continue to provide sustainable service as these challenges continue to emerge, and in many cases, continue to increase over time, so that you can avoid large rate spikes to your citizens in your community that are oftentimes very undesirable. So that ongoing financial management, I think, is going to be a big part of really continuing to have this chart show the same way as it gets updated in the future. So just by way of recap, we're looking at about a 5.5% overall revenue increase for the water system, 2.5% for wastewater, a recommendation for a $3 stormwater environmental fee per account per month, and to adjust flood irrigation rates to achieve 50% cost recovery, as kind of a bit of a recap. I'd like to just turn it over to Tara briefly before we get into questions and discussion to just maybe talk about the upcoming activities over the next several weeks in terms of continued public engagement and outreach.
Thank you, Andy. Yeah, so we will continue engaging with the public. We have two more meetings set up with the Sustainability and Resilience Commission and the Neighborhood Advisory Commission, so those are already scheduled, we'll discuss with them again, we've already met with them before, we'll meet with them again. We have a public meeting on November 7th at the, ones at the library in person, and earlier that day, it's via Zoom for people that can't come in person. And then, we're also meeting on the 27th of this month with the Town of Guadalupe at their council meeting as well, and we'll be presenting there. And then, so then on January 5th will be the public hearing for consideration of these rate adoptions, and then if adopted, they'll become effective on March 1st. Thank you. And with that, if you have any questions?
Sounds good. Thank you so much for the presentation. I was actually gonna sort of say that I almost wish you could take that slide with the map and just simply put that up. That was, that was the biggest mic drop moment of the whole presentation, like, there you go. You know, I'm gonna turn to council comments here, Councilmember Keating, followed by Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Yeah, I echo the mayor's comment there, I mean, really, when you look at...
We can leave that up for a while if you like.
Can we just?
Yeah, just, it's like I said, just leave it up there, you know.
You know, so we go through this a lot, right? We've been through wastewater rate studies several times in my six years, and every time it's contentious, whenever you're talking about raising the price of anything, particularly these days, it's always such a hot-button issue. But I just want to say, I love the way that you laid it out so methodically about this is why we're doing it, here's the cost that we need to meet, here's what's a prudent increase to meet those costs. And, you know, in, one, getting rid of the fifth tier, right? You simplified it, but you also kept an emphasis on conservation, keeping in mind that we are in a desert, and the Colorado River is running dry, Lake Mead's emptying, but we're still delivering water to our residents at what is a substantially cheaper price than much wetter areas of the country. So that's, kudos to you all and everyone that's come before you all. I'm very pleased with this presentation. I'm looking forward to the public meetings, I'm sure there will be spirited meetings on this issue, but know that, speaking for myself, I'm with you guys and I appreciate the work that you've done here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Vice Mayor Adams, then Councilmember Devaro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I completely concur with my astute colleague here, Mr. Keating. Another slide I think you should leave up for a long time is the water, wastewater, stormwater, solid waste, the gallons, you know, the 70,000 gallons of water. And by the way, I love the coloring of this slide. So we are the third lowest water rate charger in this entire valley. And I think people, because I hear a lot about water rates, and I think that people don't realize just how good they have it in Tempe. And, you know, you guys have done a great job managing the program, keeping us very, working very tightly and efficiently, and I'm just really, I'm really proud of you, and I'm proud of this number. I mean, seriously, third lowest in the entire valley. That's impressive. So you're doing everything right, keep up the great work, I'll be supporting this rate change. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. I'm going to Councilmember Devaro, followed by Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate you guys' time, this is a great report, the data information, I mean, this is, the years on the council, when it comes down to this issue, is such a touchy-touchy subject, right? But you guys have done a great job on laying out strategically the data that you captured, I mean, really kind of just showing the people, you know, where they're at and what we have to do. I mean, at the end of the day, I think a lot of people come from back east and whatnot, and they see and they, or have relatives that have these tremendous taxes and rates and all these things that happen, and I think the fear gets to, oh no, we're gonna be that way. And so the pause and everybody's just kind of like, let's not do that, let's not increase our prices, the holdup, I think, has to be explained. And I think you guys have done a great job of explaining this whole thing, because at the end of the day, we're not trying to increase dramatically, we're trying to at least increase methodically, but hopefully not increase much at all. If anything, we can sometimes have some years where we're going down, but we have to deal with infrastructure, we have to deal with our growth. I know we talked about the Kyrene Water Treatment Plant, has to be up and running. So these are the challenges that we have as a city, as a city that has actually done a great job in terms of getting revenue from various other sources to do various other things. I mean, if we don't do those things, these other entities don't happen, but we have to take care of our system and the infrastructure. So I appreciate what you guys are doing. I think this is going to be a great conversation as you go out to the public on this, but I think you're going to deliver it well. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilmember DeVara. Councilmember Chin, followed by Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I think it's, I understood it. So I, it was very clear. So I just want to clarify a couple of points. First, the stormwater fee, the new fee is not an additive fee. It's simply an existing fee that's simply delineated now. Is that correct?
Their costs you're incurring today that we're really calling out specifically as part of the program...
Right, so it's not additive. And I, I thought it was great to have the lower fixed fee for everyone, but then the variable rate for usage just makes sense. And so back to conservation, I like that we promote conservation. I think it's no surprise that we all live in a desert, and we've known this for a very long time. And we've lived with and operated in a conservation mindset. And I know the city has many ways to incentivize the installation of different low flow, different ways to conserve water. At the same time, is this true? This is what I've heard from a very learned colleague, that in the last 20 years, as the population has grown by 17%, the water usage has actually dropped by 10% overall.
Yes, this is correct. That's accurate.
Okay, thanks.
That was a heck of a stat. That's, that was, that was really good. Councilmember Hodge.
All I want to say is, great presentation. If I can understand it, which I have no knowledge on water usage, then I think that it's going to be well perceived by the community. So thank you so much for, for explaining it and all the work that you guys do. I think it's going to be great for the city of Tempe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Councilmember Garwood.
Hi, thanks. As everybody said, great presentation. I would hover, when you do this in public, I would hover over this one a little bit longer and maybe the other map one a little bit longer. Because, you know, we, we've seen this package. It was sent to us, so I've already looked at it, so I knew what was coming up. But for the public, it would be nice to just let them look at this for a little bit longer than what you guys did, just, just a recommendation. But it was a great presentation. Really appreciate all the work that you did. Data is amazing, and the data is incredible, what you're able to, to show us and show the story of our water by doing this. So I just want to say thank you so much for doing that. I love that you're going to be doing a presentation in Guadalupe. Great idea. I'm glad that you're pulling them in to do that. That is really amazing. Great partnership with this community right next to us, so thank you. One other suggestion I was just thinking of, I don't know, might have done this before, I don't know. But, you know, we talk about the, Councilmember Chin just said something about the incentives that we have. You know, have we ever put inside our water bill the different rebate programs that we have? Because if, if not, it'd be nice to do it, or if we have done it, maybe putting something in there again about our WaterSmart program and about the rebates, and then just throw something, then they're about Tempe together, they can add extra money onto that little $5 thing. But I think that'd be really, it'd be nice to be able to see that in there.
Yeah, and we actually do that from time to time. We'll put it, we have a full page ad in certain publications, and then we'll add it to the water bill maybe once a year or something, but we could up that. And then we have a URL code and everything. And so we try to populate as much as possible, especially now, and the messaging we're getting out on conservation, but we'll continue to do that and look and maybe increase the frequency.
Yeah, as I say, I know that, you know, some people pay their bills online, so they don't typically, like, I honestly have to be honest, I can't remember the last time I actually looked at ours. But, but to be able to have that online also when they pay their bill, oh, I guess you couldn't do that because it's already set up automatic. Anyway, I'm just trying to think of other ways to get that information out, because it's amazing how many people I've spoken to that do not know about our WaterSmart program.
Well, yeah, and we have, and we have, now we created a one-page little flyer thing, and it has some of the rate study information in there, as well as links and phone numbers to conservation so that they can get all of that information.
Is that the one you just sent to us? Okay, I'm going to share that with everybody then. Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, Councilmember Garwood. Just really quickly, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. And I know a couple of other folks talked about this up here, but it can't be understated that water is a very important subject, obviously, in the valley. It's an important subject, period. But it can be very complicated and difficult to understand. So the fact that you were able to present this in such a way that was very clear, that, I mean, I completely understood everything you were talking about, and I think that when you take this out to the public, I think the public will be, be, be very able to digest this as well. You know, I spent five and a half years on the AMWA, which is Arizona Municipal Water Use, Water Use Association Board. I know Councilmember Garwood served on it as well, and Councilmember Chin is now our rep there. It's, it's a very difficult subject to frankly to grasp, all of the pricing and Lake Mead water levels and Colorado River. It's, it's, it's a lot. But the fact that you were able to condense that presentation into a way that really made me frankly understand exactly what you were talking about, I think it's going to come across very well to our residents. So I just wanted to say, not only is it great work, but it was very, very exceptionally well presented. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, next up, I'm going to just, once again, take something out of order here really quickly. I'm going to go back to item number seven, which is announcements from the mayor. And the item I have here is item 7A, which is the Chase-Lucas Day proclamation. I'd like to thank...
Mayor, I'm not quite ready yet. If you just give me a second.
Oh, okay, okay, fair enough. How you feeling now? You good? You good? All right, cool. Awesome. So I was going to say, I want to thank Councilmember Keating for this, but I guess that's kind of obvious at this point. But I do have a proclamation here. Councilmember Keating, what do you, like, you read it down here or read it right up here? What do you think? Let's go down there? All right, let's do it. Perfect. All right, council wants to follow me down here? Yes, let's go all of us, actually, because, you know, I know we took pictures today, so we all look good. All right. So I've got a proclamation, and after I read this, if folks would like to come up and join me, or come up right now, actually, that'd be perfect. Come on up. He was like, no, I'm ready, let's do it. I'm good with that.
This is great. Thank you guys so much. I really appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, go do it. Always. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right, so here we go.
So whereas Chase Lucas, an Arizona local, got his start playing football at the Tempe Boys and Girls Club in the early 2000s. And whereas Chase went on to play football at Chandler High School, where he won the state championship during his junior year, and was selected to play in the U.S. Army All-American Bowl. And whereas Chase attended his hometown college, Arizona State University, to play, there you go, to play football for the Sun Devils for six years after high school. And whereas in April of 2022, Chase was drafted as a cornerback by the Detroit Lions with the 237th overall pick in the seventh round. And whereas Chase's family still resides in Tempe, and even though he may be in Detroit now, he will always have a home in the city that makes waves in the desert, just as Chase once did. Now therefore, I, Corey Woods, with the help of Councilmember Keating, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare October 13th, 2022, as Chase Lucas Day in Tempe, Arizona.
I just want to say thank you guys so much. Beautiful community, beautiful city. Oh, I'm so sorry.
There you go.
Really, I just want to say thank you guys, or everybody here, my family especially. I wouldn't be nothing without you, Mom. Thank you so much for everything that you've done for me. I'm really at a loss of words, just very, just truly thankful, and I really appreciate you guys being here. Go Devils always.
I don't expect you to win a Super, just win a playoff. I'm just so worried. I've been winning one in my lifetime. I just can't afford it.
There we go. There we go.
Yeah, that's perfect.
All right, we go, one, two, three. Everybody want to throw pitch work?
Yeah, got to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, guys. Wow, I love you guys. You guys are awesome. I hope you guys can be good to make a good plays out there. Okay, all right.
Nah, you got to wear the rest of the day. There you go.
You can leave it on all, man.
I'll be chopped up on the TNT.
Seriously.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, City of Tempe.
All right, we are going to next go to item 3B, which is the update on the extension of Proposition 400, which is House Bill 2685 veto. And I see Marilyn DeRosa, our Engineering and Transportation Director.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I, I was sitting here listening to all the other presentations, and I was thinking that all the presentations tonight have been about very important services that, that the, that we provide to the community. The next two presentations will be about transportation. In this case, we've invited a speaker. As many of you know, the Valley of the Sun has a long history of collaborative transportation planning through regional policy development and partnerships, accomplishing this largely through the Maricopa Association of Governments. One of the primary funding mechanisms for the delivery of these collaborative project efforts has been a countywide transportation excise tax in place since 1985. The most recent iteration of this tax is set to expire in 2025. And the region, under MAG's leadership, has spent the last two-plus years creating and unanimously approving a regional transportation plan for the next 25 years. Implementation of the plan, however, is dependent upon the voters approving an extension of the existing tax, which we've been referring to as Prop 400E. In the past legislative session, the region worked with the State House and the Senate to pass the legislation allowing the tax extension question, Prop 400E, to go to the voters. All was going according to plan until the governor surprised even his most cynical observers by voting, by vetoing the legislation. The governor's veto has required the region to identify alternative methods for getting the Prop 400E question to the ballot, and we're working on those through various strategies. In the meantime, we've invited Ms. Audra Thomas, which some of you know, the transportation planning, program planning manager for MAG, who's been instrumental in shepherding this plan through the region. She's going to share with council the potential and quite severe consequences should that transportation tax expire in 2025. I'm going to go sit back in the audience and let Audra go through the presentation. Staff is here, Marge, Shelley, anyone, if you have any questions when the presentation is completed. So, thank you. Thanks.
Well, on behalf of the Maricopa Association of Governments, thank you so much for the invitation to present this evening. Indeed, this was not the presentation we had planned to give to you in October. Instead, having planned for an educational opportunity to talk about what your constituents would be voting on in November. Unfortunately, July 6th, as mentioned by Marilyn, the governor vetoed House Bill 2685, which would have enabled voters the opportunity to make a decision on the legacy sales tax that has delivered the transportation system we all use today. And that has left quite the mark for us to pivot towards. So today's presentation is going to talk a little bit about history to provide really important context to anchor you on why this is such a pivotal point in time for us. Talk about the investment plan that the city of Tempe, along with its 31 other member agencies at MAG, worked over the course of the last three years in putting together that, as Marilyn said, delivered in unanimous support by mayors, supervisors, Native Nation presidents, unique and historic certainly for this region. Talk a little bit about bus rapid transit in particular. I know that there's some interest about that exciting investment that we have planned as part of the investment plan itself. And then talk about the implications of the veto, not just for those future plans and projects, but to our current program as well. As noted, there has been a legacy unique to this region, using the dedicated half-cent sales tax to deliver the transportation system that we use today. Back in the early 80s, mayors learned that it would take 60 years, that's six and zero, to deliver and establish the initial Loop 101 for the region. And that's when mayors came together at the Maricopa Association of Governments, knowing we needed to do something to accelerate the vastly needed transportation systems for a rapidly growing region such as ours, and came together to establish at the time one of the first dedicated sales taxes, local sales taxes to deliver transportation in the country. It is now a widely replicated model, including here by the city of Tempe, to establish and support transit in this region. It was followed after 20 years of investment by Proposition 400, which is our current program. So we have 40 years' worth of a legacy in delivering transportation investments. So to bring us back to 1986, this is a map of what the transportation system was then before the establishment of that dedicated half-cent sales tax. We had Interstate 17 coming through the region, portions of US 60, but even Interstate 10 that goes coast to coast, ocean to ocean wasn't yet complete. That final segment of Interstate 10 was completed here in the Phoenix metropolitan area through the Dec Park Tunnel, and that was in the early 1990s. So you can see how instrumental it has been, the dedicated half-cent sales tax, to establishing what we consider as our regional transportation system. This is the legacy of Proposition 300, that first 20-year dedicated half-cent sales tax investment, and delivered the freeway system or what we know as the Loop system today. No longer waiting 60 years to deliver the initial segment of Loop 101, delivered the entirety of Loop 101, 202 portions, excuse me, of 51, as well as 143, helped to establish Valley Metro RPTA as well, back in Proposition 300. Our work wasn't yet done. We were continuing to rapidly grow. Mayors came back together, recognizing also the variety of transportation needs were growing, especially in rapidly urbanizing areas. And so the extension of, or the extension then, Proposition 400, was passed by voters, this time doing more than just freeway investments, not just delivering Loop 303 and Red Mountain Freeway, which opened just a few years ago, but helping to establish light rail in the region, opening streetcar just earlier this year in Tempe. What also is important is our grid network, delivering over 250 miles of the arterial grid network, unique to this region, that contiguous grid system that moves half of our people every single day. Over 7.5 million bus operating miles every year is supported by the region's investment, Region Holy Funds, ADA Paratransit Service. Also, including in this investment plan are the iterative widenings, important traffic interchanges that we add, those improvements and modernizations of the system, the original system that we have invested in, as well as the important active transportation or ITS safety investments as well. These investments undoubtedly have increased and improved the quality of life of this region. It's brought enormous amount of jobs. Over 80% of the jobs in the region are located within a mile or two of a freeway or a high-capacity transit corridor. It saves us time, giving us the opportunity to spend it with the people we love, doing the things we love most. And it brings wealth to our community. And so the economic development impact of this transportation package is undoubtable. And that's why you see our friends in this world put our transportation front and center when they are looking to bring the latest and greatest jobs and employers to this region. This is just an analysis of the last five years from our friends over at GPEC. And you will see, it's not surprising, where their locates are landing. It is alongside our major train... It is alongside our major transportation network, which is funded here by the region. I think most importantly, and perhaps the most nerving part of the veto, is that our public gets it. There is a tremendous amount of support for transportation investments. You hear it from your own constituents here in the City of Tempe. When we started this effort, we started with some research, anchored in identifying what constituents in this region value the most, did extensive public engagement so we could preserve those things within the long-range transportation plan we set out to develop. And our national consultant came back four years ago and said, he has never seen this amount of support for transportation in a region. There is equivocal support for transportation investments. People don't know who's in charge. They don't know who's made those decisions. But they know they're well-planned and want to continue those investments and are anxious at the opportunity to continue them. So we're at a very interesting part of our history for the first time in a very uncertain future, where we had planned and spent time working with the City of Tempe and our 31 other member agencies in developing our next long-range transportation plan for the future of our region. And that is now in question because we do not have a pathway to the ballot. Unique to Maricopa County, we have to go to the state legislature to seek that permission to come back to our voters. All 14 other counties in the state of Arizona already have a path directly to their board of supervisors for asking for transportation investments up to one cent sales tax. So I'm going to pivot a little bit, talk a little bit more about the investment plan itself. Unique here, we leverage the sales tax against the other funding the region has made available to. That includes federal formula funds that have some strings attached and dedicated uses for, as well as the highway user revenue funds that come into our region, or what we have previously referred to as the gas tax, in combination with the sales tax that lands a 25-year revenue portfolio of approximately $36.7 billion for the region. These are the discrete capital investment projects. I know your staff has kept you well apprised. I won't spend a lot of time necessarily on this map, but this does represent a couple hundred different capital investment projects across the region. Certainly, important investments in transit, finishing out the freeway system, including our HOV network, including in that some important arterial investments again as we continue to expand and grow throughout the region. As part of this process, we've really been working for the last five, six, seven years doing a lot of pre-work. And part of that was a regional bus rapid transit plan and study that we intended and deliberately scheduled to help inform this long-range plan process. We haven't done bus rapid transit in this region. We saw it as a viable potential opportunity. And so working with cities throughout the region ultimately dedicated a study specifically to this potential mode to identify its potential viability within the region. And we did that anchoring in what we call transit propensity, finding the places throughout the region where we have the highest transit demand to support a very high-valued transit investment. There's a lot of benefits to BRT. And in a lot of those ways, it serves a lot of the same value, high-quality value that you see like in a light rail investment, but for a marginal cost relative to light rail. And that's why we were so anxious to further study BRT and its potential use here in the region. And so at the end of that study, those results fed directly into the development of our investment plan. And there were three corridors recommended for regional investment. And one of those that are included in the plan is the Scottsdale Road, Rural Road, connecting Tempe to your neighbors of Chandler, as well as Scottsdale, recognizing not only the needs of your constituents, but also the high level of employment you have here in bringing and moving people here, especially with your goals of a 20-minute city, recognizing you have a lot of folks to move in and out of your community any given day because of the density of your employment nodes here. One of the things I want to emphasize about the consequences of the veto is that transportation projects, especially capital-intensive ones, take a long time to deliver. And unfortunately, without a path to the ballot, without what we call enabling legislation, we cannot kickstart and invest in those project development activities that take sometimes multiple years, even a decade, before we're able to start breaking ground, construct, and then open a course to traffic and/or use and service. And so one of the consequences is the work, especially for the project of Scottsdale Road, Rural Road, which is in Phase 1 of our investment plan, cannot begin until we have a pathway to the ballot and a successful vote by our residents. The plan is much more than those projects we show on a map. Folks love looking at those. But I want to draw your attention to that salmon color in the lower-left-hand corner. One of the goals of our planning work, one of the challenges Mayor Woods and his fellow colleagues gave us is develop a long-range plan that's flexible for an uncertain future. And one of our strategies in doing so is bolstering our programmatic approach, identifying the valued investments for the region and setting aside funding that iteratively every few years, using our well-established call for projects, we can identify the best and brightest projects throughout the region to invest in and/or take advantage of the latest and greatest technologies or challenges that we face, not just today, but 5, 10, 15, 25 years into the future. The ultimate consequence if we're unable to extend the dedicated half-cent sales tax is it will result in a catastrophic loss to our transportation system. You'll see here, we will lose more than half of the available funding, transportation funding, to the region, being left only with the diminishing Highway User Revenue Fund source, as well as the federal formula funds that come to our region. One of the things in working with our partners down at the legislature, we heard a lot, was a reflection about the increase in transit investment. And you bet, we are increasing the amount of funding we are putting into transit as a direct result of the feedback we got from constituents. The number-one request we got was to make transit bigger and better. And you saw commiserate investment increase in transit, particularly for bus transit. But when you take all the funding sources available to the region, the actual largest proportional increase is in arterials and programs. And one of the reasons that is is because there are more and more pressures placed on the City of Tempe and your sister cities in delivering just the basic roadway and maintenance needs throughout your community. One of the reasons is because of the Highway User Revenues Fund diminishing value overall. In this graphic, you will see the bars representing the inflated adjusted revenues coming in from the Highway User Revenue Fund, also often referred to as the gas tax. That hasn't been modified or increased since the year 1991. What you see behind it is a graph of the state's population. Over the same time, in 2000, we got more revenue from the Highway User Revenue Fund than we did last year, and over that same time, increased the state's population by 40%. Bottom line, we are using our roadways and our transportation system more and more every single day and literally contributing less to the maintenance and operation, let alone the expansion of the system overall. So what does that mean in terms of the impacts? Let's first talk about the arterial grid system. You're going to see fewer new roadways throughout the system if we are unable to extend the dedicated sales tax. It's going to put limitations on the City of Tempe to be able to respond to economic development opportunities. And you will continue to see the decay of the existing roadway system and operational effectiveness diminish because there will not be funding available to address those modernization needs. The picture gets even more grim when we look at transit. This map reflects our current bus transit system throughout the region. What you see reflected in red are the routes that are either wholly or partially funded by the region's dedicated half-cent sales tax. If we are unable to continue the dedicated half-cent sales tax, these are the routes that are at risk of going out of service January 1st, 2025, 2026, excuse me. There's a considerable amount of red on this map. One of the scariest parts is that this probably under-represents the true impact to transit. The region, as I mentioned, picks up the cost of ADA para-transit. That's a federally required service to address, of course, our most vulnerable users of our transit system. And if the region cannot continue the sales tax, the only funding source we have available for operations that will place the responsibility for ADA para-transit also on the backs of our local communities that will result in either finding even more revenue to address not only the region's loss in transit funding, but also para-transit funding. And that will require either new revenue sources at the local level or reduction in service to be able to make up for that costs. And so we're now faced with the reality of not just not being able to expand the transit system, the highest priority we heard through our public engagement process, but actually contracting the existing system that we use today. And now moving on to the freeway system. It's been instrumental, of course, in delivering the economic wealth that we've seen in this region. This is a map showing just a handful of the freeway projects included in the plan. But what I want to highlight is the association to some of our most viable economic development nodes, where we're seeing the highest level of investment and activity occurring in our region. That's no mistake. When we put together the regional transportation plan in partnership with the City of Tempe and 31 other member agencies, economic development being responsive to getting people to jobs and education was a top priority. So it's no mistake that you see the commiserate investments located on this map. All of these are at risk, if not for the extension of Proposition 400. So when you look at the future for freeways in this region without the sales tax, quite frankly, the future is bleak. The funding we do have remaining available to the region will be focused on existing infrastructure to meet federal performance targets. We will be unable to build any new freeways. And there'll be limited funding available to expand on existing facilities. One of the questions we get a lot is, well, can't we just do more state appropriations? How about that historic federal investment, IIJA, in transportation and infrastructure from Washington DC? And without doubt, those things absolutely help. But when juxtaposed to the $90 billion of demonstrated transportation need in this region, there is no way to close the gap. And those funds alone are insufficient to meet our most basic needs in the region. So with the veto, what has resulted is an immediate slowing down of the existing program. Transportation projects take a long time and commitment to deliver from vision through design and environmental work, as I mentioned before, we start constructing and either opening to service or to the traveling public. One of those projects I'd highlight is SR 30, the center segment in the Southwest Valley. It was an original Proposition 400 program project. Because of the Great Recession, we had to push out 40% of the program. We lost 10 years of revenue from Proposition 400. That was one of the projects we had to defer out of the program. But we've committed, as a region, half a billion dollars to advanced right-of-way and utility work, unique to the constraints of this corridor, some work that can only be done a certain time a year, once or twice a year. We estimate, because of the veto, that is setting that project back at least two years. Those are two years we can't make up any other way. That's lost time on the project development process. And in fact, ADOT, after the veto, canceled the final design of that project in particular, knowing there wasn't a future pathway or revenue source to construct. So are the key takeaways? The veto will have impacts to the regional projects and programs. Project costs will increase by hundreds of millions of dollars because of this delay, even if we are able to find success in subsequent weeks, months, or even years. Inaction will lead to a greater cost burden placed on the City of Tempe and your sister communities, as well as the state of Arizona. The loss of the dedicated half-cent sales tax will in fact be detrimental to the region's transportation network. We'll be unable to keep up with current growth, let alone future growth, which we see and continue to see as new neighbors join us in this wonderful region. And there'll be significant impacts to our economic prosperity and quality of life. So I recognize this is a really doom and gloom part of tonight. And I want to bring a message that we continue to be united with Mayor Woods and his colleagues. The region has reaffirmed its commitment to the plan. We've spent the last several years coming together to build. Major compromises were made. Mayors made tough decisions to identify just the highest of priorities. And staff at the City of Tempe worked extremely hard, nights and weekends with us as we made these tough decisions to come together and build a plan that, as we've mentioned, was in fact unanimously supported. We continue to work because the direction our mayors have given us is to work to ensure that we can bring the extension of Proposition 400 in front of voters as soon as possible. That work includes meeting with business community, stakeholders continuing to educate the public. That also includes an economic impact analysis that we just completed in partnership with our friends at GPEC. Mayor Woods will be hearing this information this month. We're just trotting it out. What would otherwise have been a nine-month study, we were able to complete in just two months, recognizing the unexpected and dramatic impacts of the veto. We're happy to come back, of course, and provide that information with an invitation. And of course, continue to educate and pursue that opportunity for voters to have a voice. And so as I complete my presentation and certainly welcome any questions or discussions that you have, I want to acknowledge the hard work that has gone in. Pictured here is the Transportation Policy Committee. That is a statutorily codified public-private partnership that works together and is custodian of the planning process, as well as its implementation. They unanimously recommended the plan itself. And you will see on this picture, six business community members who are appointed by the state legislature to sit on this committee. And we are proud of their work. They delivered a recommendation that was in fact unanimously supported by our regional council. So with that, Mayor Woods, members of city council, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate the presentation. I was just going to say very quickly, and then I'm going to go to Vice Mayor Adams. I appreciate all the work that's been done. And as you said, kind of working at a very accelerated pace because of how important this issue is. But probably, I would say, Mayor Giles has talked about this so effectively in public. This is not just simply a transportation plan. It's frankly the key to our economic development growth over the next 25 to 30 years. And so it was a very unfortunate veto. This is something that Democrats and Republicans agreed upon all throughout the entire valley. And as you talked about, made many sacrifices to all get on the page, the same page regarding this plan. We all don't want to... Maricopa County is the fastest-growing county in the country. We all don't want to be sitting in traffic for the next 10, 15, 20 years because we don't have adequate transportation infrastructure. And companies and businesses are not going to want to expand or relocate here if we don't have the proper transportation infrastructure. So that's, I think, the message we've been trying to get across to the governor is, this is not just a transportation plan. It's an economic development plan as well. And we have to do this if we're going to continue to march forward in the right direction. With that said, Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, thank you for all your hard work. Excellent presentation. Just, I mean, obviously, we're going to have a different governor one of these days. And just was wondering how fast we could reverse this veto after he's out of office? Like, how long would it take to get it back through and get a signature on this? What would you think? I mean, estimate?
Mayor Woods, members of council. So it's as quick as the legislative body and governor can act. For Proposition 400, we were the first bill out of the legislature, and it was signed by the governor February 4th of that year. Our bill, while endorsed by nearly two-thirds of the legislature this year, didn't get out until the very end. That was at the end of June, in the early hours out of the Senate, and then later that night by the House. The governor ultimately vetoed it on July 6th. So it's up to, and they can move as quickly as they would like. I would say the other constraint is it's a direct referral. So the legislature and governor is simply authorizing the opportunity for Maricopa County voters to consider this question. And then that's left up, of course, to Maricopa County voters ultimately to decide. The county does need a window to be able to prepare a ballot, and that takes some time. And so five or six months based on that decision would need to be able to be provided. So the earliest election date, even if the legislature acted right out of the gate early next year, it's probably fall of next year to go to a ballot.
Wow, that's a lot of valuable time lost for something that's so critical for our valley. So thank you for your presentation. And I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Let me go to Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for being here. At the Arizona League of Cities, the room when you guys presented this was the most packed room out of all of the events that I attended. And I can see why, because it affects all of us. And everybody was there, really wanted to get the information. It doesn't lessen the impact and the scariness of it. So thank you for being here. What can we do to help move this along?
Mayor Woods, members of council, thank you for that question. I think the most important element is staying together. I can't underestimate the value of having a unanimous support of this plan, representing the city of Tempe, but just as much folks who live in Wickenburg, or the town of Fountain Hills, or the city of Goodyear, city of Phoenix. We are a diverse set of communities, and being able to come together and unanimously support a plan that represents a region over 10,000 square miles is not an insignificant feat. Together, our councils represent 65% of the state's population. Our success will be sticking together and ensuring that we find a way for Maricopa County voters to have a voice. And so I would continue just to request your support and diligence, as Mayor Woods certainly has already provided at regional council, in sticking together and finding a resolute as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any of the councilmembers, any further comments or questions? Councilmember Hodge.
Followed up on Councilmember Garland's question, is it something we can do to -- with our legislators, like, you know, kind of push the buck on pushing it, making it go in that direction? Because they do it to us, so it's about time we give them back.
Mayor Woods, members of council, this is a March question squarely, but I will take just an opportunity to offer my two cents. Any opportunity you can educate and reaffirm your support, it gives your legislators the strength they need to make tough decisions down at the legislature, right? And so I would reinforce those opportunities, not just with your current legislators, but any new ones that you might have, making sure they're aware of how important this is for the future, not just of this region, but quite frankly, the state of Arizona.
Marge, since your name was invoked.
Thank you, Marge Zilla, Government Relations Officer. Thank you, mayor and council. I did want to add on to what Audra had said and say that we appreciated very much the support of all nine legislators that represent the three districts that overlap Tempe this past session. And as was said, we'll be engaging with our upcoming legislators in the newly redistricted legislative districts to request their support.
Well, I was thinking about going outside. You know, we can go to the ones that are not so supportive.
And mayor, council, absolutely, as there are strategic opportunities for that. We'll engage.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Anyone else? Further comments, questions? Seeing none. Audra, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Marge, thank you as well. All right. Next item is Item 3D, which is the Vision Zero update. And I will call upon Kathy Hollow and Ellie Veloson.
I'm Kathy Hollow. I'm the city traffic engineer. And with me this evening is Ellie Veloson. She's a senior civil engineer in the Traffic Engineering Group, and she leads Division Zero program. So we're going to do an update, as you requested, and you're going to go ahead and use the clicker. There we go. So just a little bit of background, I think you probably are all familiar with it, but the Vision Zero plan that we have provides a clear goal of eliminating traffic fatalities and serious injury accidents. It directly addresses Performance Measure 1.08, which says that we need to achieve a reduction in the number of serious and fatal injury crashes to zero. The plan was adopted in May of 2019, and it focuses on reducing the severity of crashes through engineering enforcement and education. Now, the next slide contains some potentially jarring images. We worked closely with PD discussing what's going on in the city, and they have provided these images just quickly to show that, yes, we do have some tragic events, and it affects people from using all modes and also all ages. So. And here's a quick snapshot update of the 2021 data. We had 66 serious injury or fatal crashes, as they are outlined here. Looking at the fatality column, we had 13 fatalities. Seven involved vulnerable road users, which are bicyclists and pedestrians. Six involved motorists only. And then of those, three actually involved drugs or alcohol. Is some good news, or we're hoping we're trending in a good direction? We took a look at the last five years from 2017, and if we follow the trend line, our prediction is that we are going down. So that's our hope. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ellie to talk about how we are going to get there.
Thanks. Thank you, Kathy. So I just want to go over some of the activities that we've been doing as part of Vision Zero to try and achieve this goal. The first is our participation in the World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims. We've participated the last three years, and will continue to participate this year. On November 20th, 2022, is that Day of Remembrance. So we have been posting these signs at the locations of serious -- or I'm sorry, at fatal injury crashes. And they just kind of call attention to the fact that this is a human problem. There are real people who are dying in these types of crashes. And we'll continue to post signs like this again this year. You may have also heard about our Safety Corridor Initiative. So that is a partnership with our PD that's focused on education and enforcement. The PD team, I'm sorry, there are four, yes, four currently signed safety corridors. And there is a team of PD assigned to each of those corridors. And their focus is to make sure people understand that that is what we would call a high-risk corridor, and that they need to be careful. So those currently signed corridors are on Scottsdale, between Curry and Continental, on Baseline, between Rural and Country Club, on Priest, between Broadway and 10th Street, and on Mill from Hermosa to Alameda. Those corridors are intended to be mobile. So we intend for those to only be signed for about a year, maybe a little more. But those will then be relocated to the next area where we need them. And that's in an effort to make sure those don't become stale, people don't start ignoring those signs, and they start paying attention to where they get moved to. We are focusing a bit on speed activities. Research has shown that speed does not necessarily cause crashes, but that speed does contribute to the severity of crashes. So you can see just some examples of the types of literature that have been in the news about the difference between a 20 mile per hour and a 40 mile per hour crash, for example. So we do now include, with all of our volume counts, all our traffic volume counts, we include a speed count as well. And that helps us stay a little bit more proactive on where we need to focus our attention. We are installing, we actually installed today, a speed feedback sign. This is on Mill in the northbound direction near Alameda. There was always one there in the southbound direction. There's now one there in the northbound. And that was done because a speed study showed that the northbound speeds were actually higher than the southbound speeds. And we're hoping that if this shows a reduction, we can employ the same strategy in other locations. Similarly, we have ordered, what you see on the bottom right, these kind of lighted speed limit signs. And these are not in response to an observed speed, they're just always lit in the night. And that, we are hoping, will help draw attention to the speed limit. We're doing a pilot study with those along College Avenue between Apache and Southern. And again, we hope that data from that study will let us know whether that's a strategy we should employ in other places. So part of our analysis was this heat map analysis that we created. So this heat map shows serious and fatal crash locations over the past five years, from 2017 to 2021. And this helps us determine what areas we need to focus in on next. So we've identified the area of Baseline Road from approximately Hardy to approximately Lake Shore Drive as an area that we'd like to focus on in the coming months and years. We conducted a near-miss analysis with the help of a vendor called Street Simplified. This is 24 hours of video data that the vendor collects and then uses -- they analyze with their AI software to identify what is, could have been, a serious crash, or a near-miss is what they call it. So this not only gives us, you know, statistics of what happened, but also video of several of those near misses, so we can understand exactly what's going on. And they provide some suggestions for safety improvements based on their research that they do around the country. So here's just an example of that near-miss analysis at Rural and Baseline. You can see it identifies for us where we have phase-transition left-turn conflicts, vulnerable road user conflicts, speeding events, et cetera. So this helps us understand what those patterns are and how we might address them. This near-miss analysis is something that we hope to continue to use in the future. And here is an example of the type of video that we get from that. So you can see in this example, the near-miss margin was 2.7 seconds. And I'll just, I wonder if I can just play it again? It was quick. And that means that if either vehicle had waited 2.7 seconds, or had been 2.7 seconds slower or faster, a collision would have occurred. So moving forward, we are moving forward with a project along Baseline Road, the Safety Enhancements for Baseline Road Multimodal Corridor. That will include landscape access-controlled medians to help minimize left-turn conflicts, a pedestrian crossing at the Western Canal Pass between Kyrene and Mill, hopefully some advanced traffic-controlling equipment that will help us implement things like leading pedestrian intervals, enhanced visibility intersection equipment, like backlit signal heads? Sorry. And just in general, enhanced pedestrian, bike, and transit facilities. So we did apply for, I think IIJA was already mentioned once tonight, but we did apply for a grant for the state streets for all grant application to complete this project. And if that is not, if we're not given that grant, there are other funding opportunities we can go for. It just may take longer and have to be broken up into smaller projects. But this project does address, from our Vision Zero Action Plan, the six action items that are listed in that table. So it directly addresses some of those action items that we are tasked with completing. So moving forward, we plan to continue the existing programs that we are working with. For example, converting all of our lighting to LED. Our Safety Corridor program, which I mentioned, is mobile. So those will be relocated in the next year to our next areas that we want to focus on. We do have bi-weekly meetings between ourselves, the PD, and our Public Information Officer to get the Engineering Enforcement Education Team together to talk about what needs to be done next. We are also continuing to work with our other cities. I am a member of the Regional MAG Safety Committee. Vision Zero, as you all know, was recently passed in Phoenix, so we look forward to working with them and making sure our initiatives are coherent and can work together. And there are other cities around the country, as shown in this map, where we can leverage their experiences and get some feedback. Our next areas of focus, based on that heat map that we saw, are University and Priest, the southern corridor around the library area, and the Broadway corridor, to be identified, specific limits to be identified based on that map. So I'd love to take any questions from you all.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Council, any comments or questions? Let's see, Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Just was wondering how challenging it is to get more of those speed, you know, this is your speed. You have a name for them, I can't remember.
Speed feedbacks.
Yes. Could we get more of those out there? Because I think it really is a wake-up call, because people kind of are in their zone driving, and that kind of wakes you up, you know, at the blinking and...
And so that's the idea of putting the one for northbound Mill, because right now it shows a difference of like five miles an hour between southbound and northbound, with southbound being slower, and it had the sign. So we're going to put in the -- we put in the northbound side today, and we're going to see if it made a difference. Because we don't want to just go out and get a bunch if it really doesn't make a difference. So that was our hope, to see what kind of difference it makes. And then if, in fact, it does, yeah, we'll get more.
Okay.
There's been kind of mixed results in research that we've seen. A lot of them say that it does make an initial difference, and then it's about 50/50 whether that difference sticks or not.
Well, and that's why you would move them around, right? Around, you can move them.
Oh, the speed feedback signs? I'm not sure if they're able to be as mobile as our other signs, but we can look into that, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, they're installed on streetlight poles, so they're a little bit more fixed, but...
I know Mr. Palmer's in the audience tonight, and is he giving you feedback also on some of his concerns with the speeding?
Yes, we've met with him several times and have done, and one of the speed feedback sign is a, you know, a result of talking to him. We kind of focused in on Mill. And then we recently restriped the exit at the Fry's there on Mill, because he had commented on seeing some conflicts. So we're hoping we put a right-turn only to reduce the lefts, hopefully eliminate, but at least reduce the lefts coming out of there, and see if that helps make things a little bit safer there.
Well, good. I really appreciate you working with Mr. Palmer on this, because he's, I've talked to him a number of times, he's got great ideas.
Yes, and very observant, yes.
Yes, he is very observant. So that's excellent. So thanks, keep up the good work. You know, Vision Zero is a really high priority for me. I've seen so many wrecks and things, and I just want our community to be as safe as possible and keep bringing down those serious accidents. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Councilmember Garland?
Hi, thank you. So one of the things that I had asked about a year ago, maybe, is, you know, the Vision Zero Action Plan is a great guide to have, but it's just a paperweight if we're not really doing anything with it. And what I'd really like to be able to find is, and I had mentioned this like quite some time ago, is to take those strategies that we have, there's five pages of them, and being able to put them up on our website. We have some great information on our city's website, but be able to put something up there that shows the description, who's in charge of it, and then we've done it, or we're doing it, or we're going to do it, or it's annual and we just did it in June, and we'll be doing it again next year. Because there's so many things on here, that I've looked on here, I'm like, oh, gosh, well, we should have done that in the first year. I wonder if we did. But it'd be nice that our residents then can look at this and say, oh, their action plan is a living document, and they're doing all the things that we wanted them to do, because I know this was a collaboration of residents and city staff. But it would be great to be able to have something that the residents can go back on and see what we've done. So I'd really love it to see if that's a possibility that we can work on.
It is. Yeah, we do track that internally, so we can definitely get that.
Yeah, it'd just be great so somebody could click on it.
Yeah, right.
And go to that page, and then be able to see those five pages that you have of strategies and where they're at right now. That'd be great.
Okay.
Just a thought.
We'll look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any of the councilmembers' comments or questions? I just have a couple of quick things, and I just appreciate the presentation and, you know, appreciate what the vice mayor said regarding Mr. Palmer as well. Because one of the things, I know he was very, not just pivotal to us sort of going to the safety corridor concept in the city of Tempe, he was the first person who actually brought up the idea, maybe many years back, about trying to implement safety corridors to make people more aware of where there was going to be enforcement, and just trying to get people to be more cognizant of how fast they're driving. And one of the ones that I'm very appreciative of him pushing is the one on Mill Avenue, sort of by Hermosa. Because I used, that was the first apartment I ever lived in, in the city of Tempe back in 2003. And most people know I lived right around the corner of Mill and Ellis for about 14 years, in a townhome over there. And I mean routinely, not really in the morning, but probably in the evening, when people are kind of racing to get home or do whatever they think they need to get done, I would just see cars folded up like accordions right at Mill and the 60. And I'm going, what are these people doing? But I think it was partially because of the way the lane separates whatever for people who are going east on the 60, and they don't always know exactly, kind of go further right to get out of that lane. But quite honestly, it's also because people were just going too fast in this effort to get home or get wherever they're going to go. And the reality is, as the old slogan would say, I mean, it's important to be safe and arrive alive, as opposed to drive 10, 15 miles an hour, when really, there's probably no reason to anyway. So I appreciate the fact that Mr. Palmer really pushed for that Safety Corridor sign on Mill Avenue, because I do think that that's a real hotspot, and it has been for quite some time. And yeah, I just think that whatever we can do, you know, we talk about, you know, additional bike paths, and many times, that also helps to slow down some of the traffic, because when there's another lane that's sort of dedicated for people on bicycles, many times you have to create additional safety measures on those roads to ensure that cyclists can get back and forth in a very safe, comfortable way. So I think that's also part of the plan. But I agree, I think it's also just a matter of doing whatever we can to, you know, kind of, also, I should say, increase some of the enforcement. I've seen a couple of things recently on Facebook, which make me very happy, and this is sort of a shout-out to the Tempe Police Department, in terms of doing additional enforcement in school zones. Because that's also something that I see quite a bit of. Our people literally, funny, I say police, and Assistant Chief Anderson, the second I started complaining, he was right here. So I appreciate that. He was like, yeah! But I mean, but no, I appreciate what the Tempe Police Department has done, because I've seen a couple of stories of people talking in neighborhood groups about people who've gotten tickets, and very expensive tickets. That's like a $250 ticket, along with the points on your license, for speeding through a school zone. I mean, quite honestly, I can't think of people that we need to protect more in this community, other than our children and our crossing guards and teachers. community, other than our children, and our crossing guards, and teachers, who are helping to keep our kids safe. And many times, people are not cognizant of what they're doing, and they are flying through school zones with like little regard for human life, quite candidly. But I've been glad to see in some of these Facebook groups more recently, people talking about how they've seen more Tempe Police Department enforcement out at those school zones to protect our kids and protect our school employees. So, I wanted to say thank you to the Tempe Police Department as well, for really making sure, you know, to keep our community safe, as they always do. But yeah, I just think, you know, whatever we can do to continue to increase traffic safety in this community, to ensure that, you know, people, we want, we want this to be, you know, a 15, 20-minute city where people can get anywhere they want in a very short period of time, but they need to do so in a way that's cognizant of the safety and the lives of other people, so they're not just simply zipping around. And I think it's going to be even more critically important, as we continue to approve more economic development in this community, we're getting more high-rise development, we're getting more, you know, Class A office buildings and hotels and apartment complexes. And so, with that, the public safety response continues to change, and the way that we manage traffic has to change. And one of the things that Mr. Palmer has told me many times is, you know, Corey, I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Tempe, and I'm not anti-development. I'm a person who actually likes to see how the community can continue to evolve as new businesses and new housing comes to the city. But I just want to ensure that the traffic is actually managed effectively, to ensure that people are safe while we're all living here. And I think that's a really point in point. It's not about stopping the progress of where we're trying to go, to continue to be competitive and provide high-quality jobs and careers, but it's about making sure that people can be safe while pursuing those careers and going to school in our city. So, with that said, that's what I want to say. Councilmember Bar?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Woods. And I just want to add on to that, I love the data that you showed, and indicating where those traffic, or, not congestions, but accidents are happening. And I appreciate, I know that the chart showing our fatalities going down, I kind of wonder, even because of the speeds and our traffic, is the speed's not able to get up to that range? But I think it does identify, though, with your, with your information, that you can, as a city, start concentrating on lower speeds, especially on the upper half, above the 60. Yeah, that's where your, your, your higher traffic is, that's where your bike riders are at, those are where we're starting to see more people out in the streets, either walking or getting around with other modes of transportation. So, I think that, you know, the first phase of concentrating on possibly lowering speeds in those areas are really, in my opinion, have a, have a better ability for the surrounding community, because whenever, when we talk about speed limits and whatnot, this area versus this area, I think organically, when you start smart, start strategic in certain areas, I think we get a better buy-in, and we see, start seeing those, those higher speeds get down lower. I have to say, also, traffic cameras do help in various ways on various corners, in addition. I know that we've gone down that road before, but we've also seen some benefits on those too. So, with that said, I appreciate the data that you guys are showing, I think that's information that our residents need to see and understand, and I think this is a great first step.
Thank you, Councilmember Bar. Anyone else, any further comments or questions? All right, seeing none. Wonderful. Thank you so much, really appreciate the presentation. The next item is Item Number Four, Call to the Audience. This is called the Audience for Committee of the Whole Items. There is one item ready for city council direction. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and address the council on this item, which is Item 5A1, Update on Employee Medical Leave Policy? Okay, seeing none. I will move forward to Item Number Five, which is Committee of the Whole. This is going to be for Councilmembers Hodge and Keating. Item 5A1 is Update on Employee Medical Leave Policy. I'll turn to them to see if they would like to give an update this evening.
Well, Mayor, I wouldn't like to, but I probably should, right?
Fair enough.
It's kind of part of the job. Yeah, so, if you might recall, I wanted the city staff to look at the feasibility of providing two additional paid days off for any city employee or their family that has to leave the state of Arizona for any medical procedure that's not available in the state of Arizona. For example, there are, you know, exploratory cancer treatments available at different centers around the country. I know there's a Tempe police officer who has to take his son out of the country for, for cancer treatments, and I just wanted to make sure that they're not having to use their accrued and earned vacation time for those travel days. And so, I did, we did meet with our city attorney, and we met with a lot of different staff, and they came back to say that this is not only legal, but it's very doable. So, I would like, I'm seeking consensus to refer it to the six-sided partnership, which is, it's all the city employee unions, our HR team, and our city manager, to kind of craft some sort of policy that they can bring forward to us to, to consider.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Keating?
Thank you.
Councilmember Hodge, anything you'd like to add? Are you good?
I'm good.
All right. I guess I'll look to my colleagues here, any further comments or questions, or anything you'd like to add? Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, I'm completely supportive of this move, and I think the more we can do with our, do for our employees, the better. I know the morale has been struggling a little bit, and I just want to, I just always want to take care of our employees. And as a former employee, I know how the employees feel, so it's, it just is a really, really great idea, and I commend you for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Anyone else? Comments? I would say I support this as well, I think it's a great idea, and I really appreciate Councilmembers Keating and Hodge for working on this, and so I absolutely support moving forward with this, to take it to the six-sided partnership for their review and analysis.
Thank you.
Good? Already good? Okay, wonderful. All right, sounds like we have consensus to move forward. Congratulations on that. Next up, I'm going to go to Item 5B, Council Committees in Progress. I want to see if the councilmembers have any updates they'd like to provide regarding council committees. All right, seeing none. The next item on the agenda is Future Agenda Items. Councilmembers may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. In accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request, which leads us to Item 5, 6A, Future IRS Items. Is there anything that people would like to have added for a future IRS? Okay, seeing none. I don't have any either. Moving on to Item Number Seven, since I already did my announcements early, I'm going to turn to our city manager, Mr. Cheng, to see if he has any announcements.
No announcements, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, sounds good. Well, with that said, that's Item Number Eight, that's, we're going to be adjourning the meeting here at 7:03 PM. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here. Have a good rest of your night.